Okay, Mayor Stevens, we are now live.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for being with us today on this City Council special budget work session, our first one of the next month. Well, there, Kirk, please call the roll, keeping in mind our new rules regarding virtual meetings.
Councilmember Babcock. Councilmember Bacon.
Present at virtually East Lansing, Michigan, Clinton County.
Councilmember Watson.
Here, attending virtually East Lansing, Michigan, Ingham County.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg.
I'm here, attending virtually from East Lansing, Ingham County.
Mayor Stevens.
Present, attending virtually from East Lansing, Michigan, Ingham County. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Great. All right, there's a motion and a second. Sorry, I believe Lisa will be here sometime soon. I don't know if there was a miscommunication thing. George, do we have a video link up on the online agenda? I got a text from somebody in the community that said that we didn't.
I can answer that for you. We have it scheduled under the, there's a live stream button on our main page. If they clicked that, otherwise they would have to go to our main meeting to be able to see it, since we were only able to do one video stream.
Okay. All right, all right, that makes sense. Thanks. And then my only other comment on this item, which is approval in the agenda, is at future meetings, and I should have conferred this to the city manager last week, but this is on me. If we could have communication from the audience, actually, at the end of the presentation, I think that presentation from staff is really, really helpful. I think it's good context, and I think it's good for folks that are calling in to have a little bit of that context to and information, so they can actually ask questions as follow-ups as well. We don't necessarily have time for communication for the audience on both sides, but I think it'd be good to have that. Great. So there's a motion and a second at this point, and I will note that Councilmember Babcock did just join us. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, same sign. Great. Onto our next item, which is communication from the audience. Keep in mind, you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. If you have any questions for it, we'll try to answer it right at the end. Please feel free to speak, and then I will be cutting folks off at that five-minute mark, so I do apologize if I do cut your statement short. Go ahead, Emily.
Caller with the phone number ending in 963, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, this is Alice Trager. I just missed the beginning of what you were talking about because I was trying to figure out how to listen in on the meeting. So the electronics page says, "Go to the portal." And if you go to the portal, there is no information about how to view the meeting. There is information about how to dial in, which I suppose is adequate for OMA perhaps, but I'm confused as to what's going on. So I was hoping we could get an explanation. If I try to go in on Zoom, it does not seem to work for me. Thanks.
Yeah, Emily, would you mind repeating that explanation that you gave me when I asked about that?
Yes, on our main page of our iCompass portal, there is a button that says, "Watch livestream." You can click that, or you can also go to our meeting that begins at seven o'clock tonight. Since there is only one meeting ID and one Zoom meeting, we can only have one thing going, so it's for the seven o'clock meeting. So you can click that as well.
Hey, Emily, if we do have that in the future, at future meetings, would you mind just putting something maybe even at the top of the agenda that we post on Civic Web? And just say, if you want to watch the livestream, go to, go to there.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. All right, thanks. Appreciate it. And thanks, Alice. All right. Anybody else?
I was muted. I'm sorry, I don't understand. Could you say it one more time, what one is supposed to do to be able to watch this meeting?
Yeah, so it's one Zoom meeting with one stream, and so the video is actually on the regular council meeting agenda. So if you go to the budget work session, you'll see the Agenda tab, and usually you'd see a video tab there. And in this case, you have to go to the regular council meeting that's scheduled for today, and you'll see the Agenda and the video tab. And that video tab will link you to the livestream going on right now. I guess that there's, just because it's one Zoom meeting, they could only have the video link to one place. So I was just suggesting that when in the future, on our budget work sessions, we just put something at the top of those agendas that say, "This is how you, how you view the meeting livestream."
Mayor Stevens, if I can just jump in real quick, on our main portal page, there is literally a button that says livestream, and then it says now live, and that's the easiest way to access it. It's on our main portal page, so.
Oh, okay. Good. That's good. Thanks.
Where is that? Sorry, on the portal page? I don't see it. Oh, livestream. Okay, now I see it. Okay, thank you.
Livestream, it says now live, and red button, the red button is there.
Just a suggestion, if I'm having this much trouble, the average person probably is having more trouble since I watch 15 meetings a week. Thank you. Thanks. You can hang up on me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That's the only caller we have on the line.
Okay. All right, well, then we are on to, sorry, I've been trying to figure it out, so I moved my agenda. You're under communication from council members. I will start on my left, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Greg.
I always feel caught up by that. I don't know why. I don't have any prepared statements for the budget meeting. I didn't even really think about that. I guess this is my first, even though I'm the second most senior council member, well, co-equal second with council member Babcock. This is my first regular budget season, I guess. As we started this process last year, we were just all reeling a little bit with COVID-related everything hitting us so suddenly. So just in the, in the sense that this is a return to business as usual. Obviously not usual, as we get into this, I think everyone will see that we have a lot of COVID-related things that are going to follow us through this year and probably next year as well, but at least the process feels regular. So I'm kind of looking forward to it, weirdly, even though it seems a little overwhelming and boring. But, you know, in a good way, in a return to normal kind of way, so.
Great. This is the best time of the year, budget season. Councilmember Watson.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Reagan.
I'm excited to work on the budget, looking through the numbers and being really concerned. I'm excited that the potential, things not too, perhaps, I'll preface both ways, be as severe as we, as we assumed, and I'm hopeful for, you know, this future budget, that we're back to normal, relatively new normal, and the figures hold up and things like that. So I'm just excited to work on this, a little bit of unknowns, but excited nonetheless.
Great. Councilmember Babcock. All right. I will go to me first, and I'll go back to Councilmember Babcock. I have a couple of things that I wanted to say. First off, today is the first day of Ramadan, for those that are celebrating, so Ramadan, Lubark, to those who are celebrating within our community. I would love to work with Elaine and then maybe some of our contacts over at the Islamic Center to pass resolutions sometime this, in the next month. Just recognizing the month as it is, certainly a very difficult year previous. And I know that while celebrations may be different this year, as they were last year, unfortunately, last year, fell really right into the time when things started to shut down and to have a little bit more of a different celebration. And more gathering restrictions still in place during this holy month is a little bit difficult, I'm sure, for folks. And so I want to make sure that we are recognizing and doing everything we can to support our Muslim brothers and sisters. So I'd love to pass a resolution at some point this month. I'm very, very happy to work with council members or our DEI administrator to do that. Next thing I just want to say is the amount of work that went into this budget, the amount of work that goes into the budget every single year, notwithstanding the awards that our finance department literally receives due to their work on this budget, is a lot of staff time, a lot of effort from every single department. And the truth is that this is years, decades of learning compiled into this one document that really put us in a better position than I think a lot of us imagined we would be, or had no idea where we would be last year. And with so many unknowns this past year, I'm proud of the place that we are in right now. We certainly still have unknowns out there, but I will say with our supplemental payments to the pension system, possibly adding dollars into our fund balance, dealing and trying to assess for some of the losses in revenue we saw in parking, parks and wrecks, and arts, and other things, to really make sure that we had a whole budget and we were going to be good for the next few years, was not an easy task, but it was through a lot of effort from our staff, a lot of planning in advance, and a lot of making tough decisions throughout the year to make sure that we would be in a good position when we're having this conversation today. And so that does not go unnoticed, and although this will be a very long process and a very good process, I will add as well, I did want to say that this is not, you know, just this month, this is years and years in the making. And certainly this past year, a lot of tough decisions have had to been made that have led to the position that we're in right now, which I think is a little bit better off than we would have been without. So I want to thank folks that have been with us through that time, especially when we diverted money towards helping businesses in our community, doing programs that assisted folks paying rent, reinstituting some of our social welfare or social services programming. Hopefully this year, doing a number of things to help out those in our community while still trying to navigate what is a really difficult situation. So I'm excited for this, this process, and I just want to thank all those that had a hand in the immense amount of work that it took to make this document possible. So, thank you, thank you. And I will now move on to our one item on the agenda tonight, which is 5.1, an overview of 2022 preliminary budget and fee schedule. This is the emphasis on general fund and income tax fund, and I believe a general overview, unless Councilmember Babcock still has something that she'd like to say, didn't want to give one more opportunity. All right, Jill, handing it over, or George?
Yep. So thank you. Good evening, all. We are pleased to present our proposed fiscal year 2022 budget to the East Lansing City Council. This budget comes after a time that we've been facing the global COVID pandemic for about a year now, nothing new to everybody. We've all been living it. The pandemic has obviously resulted in a tremendous loss of life worldwide and financial challenges for many people. Through all of this, the city of East Lansing has continued to serve our residents through the hard work of our employees. Many of them are working just as they've done before, and many of us have had to work remotely and work in different ways in order to accommodate these remote work rules and to limit the spread of the virus. But regardless of how we've been continuing to serve, people have been continuing to serve the community during what has been a difficult period. In terms of our finances, this time has also resulted in a lot of unknowns, as the mayor mentioned. We took early and reasonable steps, and we continue to closely monitor our finances over the last year. And we are very pleased to say that we have continued to be on an improving financial footing. So at the conclusion of fiscal year 2020, we had a modest use of fund balance that was right at the start of the COVID pandemic. At the conclusion of this year, fiscal year 2021, we're expected to add approximately $1 million to fund balance. And that's due to a lot of factors. One of them is the stability of the East Lansing community. We've got a lot of strong employers here, obviously the presidents and presence of Michigan State University, great neighborhoods that people want to live in, great schools, we know all about that. We've had the federal assistance, and we've had our own cost-controlling steps. We've talked about them before, delaying expenditures where possible, holding positions vacant, work share, and all the other things we've done. So from a broad perspective, I really believe we are well situated as we move into this budget process. We're at, with adding $1 million to fund balances, we mentioned, we are proposing a budget that does not use, have any planned use of fund balance in it, which is excellent. And we have also not planned or allocated the American Rescue Plan Act money at this point. So that gives us a lot of flexibility in the event that there are continued financial challenges from COVID as we move into this next year and face the unknowns. Our approach really is the same as it was last fall. Last fall or six months ago, we were talking about, what do the financial challenges look like? Is it going to be a catastrophe for the city? We talked about that, and we made a presentation to council. And at that point, we said, we didn't see a catastrophe in front of us. We said we were closely monitoring things, and that we would continue to monitor and make adjustments as we needed. And I kind of compare it to steering a large freighter. You look at your goal and the horizon, and you keep making that path, that direction, and you're making minor adjustments and tweaks as you need to, to keep on the right course, and that's what we've done to navigate this. So during tougher times, we did the same approach we're taking now, which are slightly better times. So careful management, maintaining reserves, continuing to monitor our finances, and make adjustments as we've needed really is the rule for us to continue to navigate the pandemic. I also want to note that this budget reflects a number of council's key priority areas, the areas of diversity, equity, inclusion, and police reform. In DEI, we have budgeted for the regular full-time position, administrative position, and also the organizational-wide training. And in police, we budgeted for our six new non-enforcement positions, two social workers and four NRSs. That represents about half a million dollars of money going into these priority areas being budgeted for the first time prospectively, and we're very happy to be able to do that. Additionally, we've heard council's concerns regarding water rates and are proposing to leave rates effectively flat at this point. And I say that with a qualifier, because the way our rate model works doesn't leave, doesn't allow you to leave rates exactly the same. You have to account for debt and how this model plugs in all of those portions together. But we'll get into more detail in the future meeting on how that exactly works. But our goal is to try to offer relief in terms of water rates to our residents for this year. So in regards to the American Rescue Plan, we're going to begin the internal planning process with our staff. We're identifying, going to be identifying all the areas that we've experienced revenue shortfalls. So where has COVID impacted our budget negatively? Identify those areas. And then as the clear guidance comes in from the, from the federal government on exactly how we can use those dollars, we'll be coming back to council with recommendations for that process. So in terms of the budget moving forward at this point, the first four months of this process is really our staff recommendation being developed. We've turned it over to council now for your review, your work, your questions, leading to you all adopting the budget on May 25. I want to thank everybody who's worked to put this together, in particular Jill Falpas and her finance team, including Audrey, Andrea, Justin, and all their key staff members. I also want to thank the directors and their key staff members, because lots of people helped participate to put this budget together and help in making those department recommendations. And of course, the finance department is working to aggregate it all and put it into this great form. I also want to thank Michael Frye Communications for the nice print-ready look and the, and the cover and all the, of the nice graphics that go into it. And of course, I want to thank council, because this is the start of an intensive process. We sort of started it back a couple, about a month and a half ago, with talking about priority-based budgeting and looking at what the departments do in terms of functionality, and looking at the capital improvement program and the strategic priorities. And now it's going to be council's process for the next five or so meetings leading to an approved budget. So with that, I will turn it over to Jill to start the process, and we await your questions and, and anything you have for us. Thanks. Jill?
Thanks, George. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to many of your very first budget work sessions. Jesse, I will do my best not to bore you too much. Unfortunately, finance and the budget isn't very exciting, so.
Lies.
I did try to plug in some graphs and that kind of stuff, which isn't really a me thing, so. You know, trying to make it, trying to make it a little bit more exciting for you guys. I just want to echo what the mayor and city manager said. This is a tremendous amount of work, but it's not just me. It's not just finance, it's, it's the entire city, its directors, its staff. And this year especially has been very difficult. There's been change after change after change. It's been careful management, it's been creative solutions to providing services. So it's just, you know, I guess this year, to me, is a bigger deal that we've made it through this. It's a positive message, it's a positive result. So I think it just says a lot about every single employee in the city, as well as city council and your guidance, and the city manager's guidance as well. While we're saying thank yous, I do want to just give an extra shout out to Audrey and Justin. They spend just as much time on this budget document as I do in putting the budget document together. Justin has played a big role in us being able to get the distinguished budget presentation award, which we got for the first time on last year's budget, which is a lot of work. You know, there's a lot of extra things that we do. You'll see there's some new stuff this year, and we'll continue to refine it, right, to make it better, to try to meet all the criteria for that award. So I'm going to share my screen and go through this presentation.
And then Jill, I want to make sure that I, that we don't interrupt you. If you're on a, on a train of thought, how would you like questions structured during this presentation?
You can interrupt me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm kind of flying by the seat of my pants, like I usually do, so.
I also want to note that we have, all the directors are present as well, so if Jill and I can't answer a question, we can kick it over to the directors, and if not, we also will certainly write down all the questions and get answers back to council, so.
Yeah, and I want to encourage council members as well. If you are having trouble formulating the question right now, please feel free to email questions after as well, and those questions are going to be answered, going to be responded to. But they'll also, we did this last year, and I want to make sure that it's accurate before I say it. We'll have questions that are asked by council members posted on the next agenda, right? That basically say, these are the questions the council member to ask, these are the answers.
That's correct. Usually what we do is compile, compile all the questions that are asked at this meeting, and then anything else, you know, tomorrow or the next day, and then we'll put the answers, even if they were answered in the meeting. We'll also attach documents of, if that's required, to answer the question. So, and then it will be attached to the agenda for the next budget work session.
Great.
Okay, so we will get started. Can everybody see my screen, the slideshow? Great. Okay, so I'm going to just take a step back and kind of walk through the document, because obviously it's a very large document. And hopefully you all have your binders in front of you, because this executive summary section, I am going to kind of flip through the pages and tell you what, what's in there. So if you want to flip along, feel free. Obviously, it's there electronically as well. If you want to scroll through it, that's is just as easy, I suppose. So the first thing I want to point out in the very front section is right after the organizational chart is that award. So this is the first year we get to put this award in there, so I just, you know, wonderful things that I want to make sure that our, our city gets credit for. Then if you flip to Roman numeral page one, that is the message from the city manager. It's followed by priority-based budgeting, so you all are familiar with PBB. So it kind of talks about the PBB process and the results that we have, and then followed by something new. So this is the strategic action plan, so it's broken out by PBB. And it basically is the strategic priorities. So it's just another way to showcase what our goals are, what our vision is, where we want to see the city going. And it kind of breaks out who's responsible for it, like which function of government is responsible for that priority. Then that's multiple pages. Then another new item is the performance measures. And I apologize if you're hearing all the clunking, my children just got home. Then followed by the performance measures, that is page, Roman numeral page 18. So this is also new, and it's kind of some metrics that each department has set for themselves. So it shows, you know, last year's actuals, what we wanted to achieve this year, and what our goal is for next year. After that is the financial policies. This is kind of a static piece of the document, but it really goes through the different financial policies that we have. Then it's the Reader's Guide to the Budget. So if you're needing to understand better, you know, what is a general fund? What are the special revenue funds? What's a capital improvement fund or an enterprise fund? This is kind of where you can go to get a little bit more explanation of where each of our funds are located in the document. Then, let's see, I'm on page 31, Roman numeral page 31. This is the budget process, so it kind of walks through, you know, from the beginning of how, how do we create a budget? All the way through this document and budget amendments and PBB. Pay, Roman paid, Roman numeral page number 33 is the timetable, so this is where you can see like upcoming meetings, when we're going to have public hearings, and when adoption is, which is May 25. It also talks about what topics are going to be at the budget work sessions. That is followed by a consolidated budget area. So this, like if you want a global picture, start looking at page 34, Roman numeral page 34. This really breaks it out by type of fund, and it shows what the revenues are. And then it does the same thing for expenditures, again, by type. So I'll point out on the expenditure page, like personnel services, it's 35%. So of the $144 million budget, 35% of that is personnel costs.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um. I did not graduate from Roman numeral classes, so can you also tell me the letters so that I attempt?
XXXV and XXXIV.
Thank you.
No problem.
I know, I always have to, I have to look at it and be like, okay, what is that number? And then we get really big numbers too, so it's hard.
Very cool.
So on here is, you know, personnel services, 35%, operating costs are 24%, capital outlay is also about 24%. Then we have debt service, 7%, transfers of 9%, replenish fund equity of less than 1%. So again, this is global, this is all funds, but still a good picture if you want to see, you know, what's happening in total in the city. If you go to the next page, this is more of a table format, so it shows by fund, and it shows 21's budget compared to 22's budget. And then the differences, so the increase or decrease, as well as the percent change. So I like this table. I'm a numbers person, so this is kind of like, I'm not the graphic person. This table is more my favorite, but the next page, which is XXXVI, so Roman numeral 37. This shows you by function. So function is like general government, public safety, public works, water, sewer, parking. So this compares the 22 to the 21, and you can see, you know, the biggest pieces are sewer at 24%, public safety at 22%, and then it jumps down to public works at almost 12, and then culture and racket almost 10. Now, I will say sewer is very large because of all the improvements that are happening there. Like, that's not a normal operation thing. That has to do with the capital improvements. So it's kind of an unusual look. Sewer wouldn't normally be that big if we were strictly doing operations and minor improvements. Okay, following that page is the personnel summary. So if you're interested in how positions have changed, there's what, six or seven pages, maybe eight, nine, I don't know, that basically break it down by fund, by department or division. So full-time and part-time positions show as like a headcount, and then contingent staffing is shown as hours. It gets difficult doing FTE, which means full-time equivalent, because our part-time positions are kind of all over the place. You know, some work 20, some work 23, some work 28. So we've kind of switched over to like a headcount instead of FTE. At the end of the.
Quick thing. So that's a lot of numbers in those charts, but if you really go through the final column, the increase or decrease for 22, 2022, that gives you a sense of where the big changes happen, and then you can look back to see what changes occurred. You know, minus one position here, plus one position there. And as Jill said, when you see the large numbers of minus 1040, minus 9,000, that's going to be hours, not, not people, not, not full-time equivalents. And when you think about hours, think that 2,080 hours or about 2,000 hours is the equivalent of a full-time staff person. So if you take 10,000 hours out of, out of a contingent pool, you're taking the equivalent of about five full-time staff people and hours, just to give you a sense. Thanks.
Yep, and at the end of the personnel summary. Yep. And at the end of the personnel summary, um, Roman numeral page fifty, which is L. This is kind of a table and it shows you again by function where our staffing is. So you can see that forty-one percent of our full-time, part-time employees are for public safety, nineteen percent are general government. Um, twelve and a half percent are culture and rec, almost thirteen percent is the garage and the public service employees. And then there's a separate graph that shows the contingent hours. And as you might expect, culture and rec is the biggest piece. So sixty-one percent of our culture and rec hours, contingent hours is for the um, culture and recreation programs. Um, and that's followed by public safety, which is really the cadets. Um.
Jill?
Yes.
Uh, this is this is really super nitpicky. Um, on the on the chart with the budget request by function, that section right there. For in futurly speaking, that's nothing, um, when it goes from dollars to percentages. Could futurly, could we go dollars to dollars? And then in the total, the center, the total amount, saying total percent increase, like obviously we're going, it's it's going up eight million dollars or something like that. What percentage increase is that? Just for easy reference, you know what I'm asking?
I'm not sure you're asking, no.
It's going dollars to percentages. So like, um, what percentage of one hundred and sixteen is eight point five, say the general government, like in dollars? Just for in the.
Just saying councilman Bacon yet Jill.
Yeah, in the easy table next time, not anything for just easy, it's be easy frame of reference for how my brain works. It's nothing you did.
Um, yeah. So like, what is eight and a half percent of the one hundred and sixteen million?
Yeah, just for quick reference. That would help a little bit, just.
Yep.
Next year.
I know there's lots of numbers everywhere. It gets a little overwhelming.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jill, I had a I had a question about the headcount numbers. Um, and so this is, I'm just asking this because occasionally we'll obviously budget for positions that that don't end up getting filled for, you know, variety of means. So a clarification on actual adopted budget and then the budget request. So the twenty-twenty actual, for instance, would be an example of, um, were those positions actually hired, filled and and operated throughout that year? And then even maybe the twenty-twenty-one adopted budget might not have been um, like fulfilled in the same way, or that that was what was adopted for, but might not actually be the correct. So when would we be able to see, I suppose, the the actual numbers for for those for like maybe the past year?
Twenty-twenty-one?
Right.
Usually what we do for the actuals is, obviously it's hard to look at the year in totality, right? Because there's vacancies and changes. Um, so contingent hours is easy because we just added them up at the end of the year.
Right.
For positions, we tend to look at a a point in time, which is usually at the end of the fiscal year. So usually we say at the end of June, was this position filled or was it not? So there is some variances there. Um, if we're seeing those variances, we will try to adjust those. Um, you know, for example, uh, the income tax section. Um, our income tax administrator left at mid-June. Um, it wasn't that the position wasn't filled the entire year. So we did put it as one for actuals for fiscal year twenty. So we try to go through and clean that up as much as we can, um, but by no means is it perfect. Um, so for twenty-one, the next time you would see numbers would really, and it wouldn't be in this much detail, but it is also part of the um, the audit document. Um, we do, um, we actually do FTEs in the audit. Um, so I guess in theory, we we could go through this exercise and give you twenty-one amounts, you know, as of now, if that's something you guys are looking for.
I don't necessarily think that that warrants uh, the the amount of time that might take. I I just maybe wanted to, uh, and I think you clarified it for me. Really, what do those numbers mean in in terms of the actual amount of people that are working for the city, say, at this given moment, right?
Right.
But that's helpful.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, moving to Roman numeral page fifty-one, which is LI. Um, this is the budget in brief. So I've always said to everybody, um, if you're going to read one section of the budget document, this is the section you should read. Um, it really tries to give an overall view of where we've been, where we're heading, what our assumptions are, what our challenges are. It also goes through the general fund, which, you know, is the most important um, fund of the city. And and then it also goes through any of those funds. Remember that consolidated page, that consolidated table page? If there were significant variances, um, we would also talk about them here in this section. Um, so it's kind of just a good, it's six pages. It's not, um, it's not a hard read, I guess. It's a very broad general overview. Um, so just a good place to go if you're going to read something in this document. And then finally, the last part of the executive summary is acknowledgements. And so again, kudos to everybody. Appreciate everybody's hard work. Um, and I look forward to another fun year of budget. So. So that's the executive summary. The next section, which is really the meat of the document, is called the financial section. And this is really the recommendation um, for the budget. And it also provides the narrative or explanatory information. So within each of these sections, um, you're going to see a lot of consistency, meaning every table is going to show fiscal year twenties actual, fiscal year twenty-one's amended budget or the current budget we're operating with. And then the fiscal year twenty-two proposed budget. You will also notice throughout the document, we may talk about the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one year-end estimates or year-end results, or just the fiscal year twenty-one estimates. You'll notice that in explanatory information, but you'll also notice it in the fund balance analysis. And when we get to general fund, I'll kind of walk you through that general, uh, that fund balance analysis. Um, but just so you know, like obviously twenty-one year-end estimates is what we think we're going to end the year at. And then finally, we have the appendix. And in the appendix, um, in your budget binders, it's an actual eleven by seventeen page folded over, pages folded over. And the first section is the comparative fee schedule. So we started doing this a few years back of showing five years' worth of the fees. Um, just so you could have a sense of when things have changed. We also started um, color coding it. So if it's red, if it's in red font, it means that the fee has increased at that point in time. If it's in blue font, then it means it's a decrease in the fee. Um, so hopefully that helps you see, you know, what's changing more at a glance instead of having to really dig through every single line. Again, it's sorted by fund. So general fund first, moving on through the other funds, water and sewer at the end. Um, we also have an excerpt from the capital improvement program plan. So this is something that you were introduced to back in February. And it's something that you'll be asked to approve um, sometime in May, I think May twenty-fifth as well. And then the last part of the appendix is some debt service schedules. So this one, um, you know, there's kind of three different schedules in here. The first one shows debt to maturity. So how much? How much debt is due each year? Um, it's similar to what we do in the budget or in the, sorry, in the audit. And then it also breaks down into more detail. The specific um, bond issues by fund. It also talks about the source of repayment. And then it kind of gives you the the fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-two principal interest and total amounts due. Um, so if you want to understand kind of how the debt's being paid, that's a good place to look. And then the last page is the legal debt margin. Um, this is, you know, important. Um, we're not anywhere near going, you know, getting high on our legal debt margin. So it's not anything I really need to point your attention to, but it is important for for the city. And we're at nineteen point eight-five percent. So, um, we're doing good from a debt capacity perspective. Okay, so that's kind of the overview of the document. Does anybody have any questions before I actually jump into other things? Okay.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, so I'm just on page four that talks about the marijuana taxes. And I might be confused by what I read, but I just feel like I I read in the city post that we received some money. So did that not, was it not about marijuana taxes? Was it not what the state gives us or where's that allocation at?
Okay, so for fiscal year twenty-one, we did not budget anything for the marijuana taxes. We did receive twenty-eight thousand dollars last month uh, for our allocation of marijuana tax. Uh, which was representative of one licensed um, shop. We know that we have two now, so we've budgeted fifty-six thousand for next year. Um, but so the reason it's showing as a zero in twenty-one is we didn't budget for it, but it is included in like our year-end estimates.
Thank you.
Yep.
And actually, since she asked about it, I I did have a question on on the marijuana revenue as well. Um, understanding uh, a little bit more about that. And there's a little bit of context as well on page seven for the marijuana taxes on assigned revenue. But um, I wanted to know if that money was earmarked in a specific way, if that was planned to just be used to add to fund balance? Um, or if that was something that we had discussed utilizing for a specific purpose um, to to cover costs associated with licensing or anything else. I know that we obviously have a license fee that we charge directly. But um, are there extra costs as well? I know that people tend to say, oh, public safety, you know, tends to be an issue. Uh, that's not necessarily something that that I know that we've seen directly, but I wanted to know if that's being allocated in a specific way.
We've had no specific direction from council, so it's not being allocated, is from my understanding.
Okay, all right. And then there there aren't really any restrictions or earmarks put from the state on how that money is is allowed to be used?
The state considers it unrestricted or unassigned, so the city can use it however they, um.
Great. And at some point in the future, I'd love to have a council discussion about possibly utilizing that money um, to to try to give back to a community that was certainly affected uh, in a negative way by the war on drugs. But that is a future conversation. Thank you for that, those answers.
Okay, so kind of another just general overview. I think we all know that COVID nineteen is impacting all the years that we're looking at here, right? So fiscal year twenty is shown, the fiscal year twenty actual. You know, we all shut down last March, so the last quarter was impacted. Um, we had very little activity, so those numbers are skewed a little bit. Uh, fiscal year twenty-one, for the budget, we did not include any potential impact of COVID nineteen. And to be honest, I'm glad I didn't try to guess at that because never ever did I think I would still be sitting here at home doing virtual meetings for um, the budget work session. So um, I never would have guessed the impact that um, it has had. And then fiscal year twenty-two, you know, a month ago, I was feeling pretty confident and comfortable that vaccines were coming out and we are all going to start moving back to a little bit of normalcy. Um, but with this resurgence, I guess I'm feeling a little bit more uncertain. Um, but you know, we tried to lay out our assumptions in the budget document. Um, I think we were trying to be conservative in the return to normal. Uh, we didn't assume everything's going one hundred percent back to normal on July one. Um, and there, you know, the assumptions are kind of, I don't want to say all over the place, but obviously there are differences depending on what kind of activity we're talking about. So, um, you know, throughout the document, you might see those types of things. Ron, did you have a question?
Yeah, in in those considerations, I was I was thinking about that. Are there areas that are going, that you considered would require uh, extra expense with relaunch or marketing, branding, like things that that would have to be brought back online that are that have been kind of diminished or maybe lost momentum during the pandemic period? Was was there a way to account for that or any assumptions around that part of it?
You know, I don't know if people took that into account a lot. I don't know, um. You know, I I guess where I'm thinking that might happen is, you know, in the Parks and Recreation Program. Uh, maybe even the seniors, how do we, you know, get the seniors back out and involved in the community and, you know, with each other? Um, so perhaps people allow for that in their budget and I just didn't get that granular in my review. Uh, we definitely can reach out and ask departments, um, you know, what their thoughts are on that and get some more detailed answer.
I think I was definitely considering that, particularly around parks and rec with like, uh, the childcare components and things like that that may have lost. I know they weren't running at half capacity and things like that. How do we? Do people instantly come back or do you have to bring some of these programs back to full capacity once we get it all go? So I didn't know if they had accounted for that. That'd be a interesting question.
We certainly can have Tim McCaffrey, who's on the call, and Wendy speak about that when that section comes up, but with that notice, they can be ready for that conversation.
That'd be great. Yeah, it just, it's stuck out to me. I was, it's a just underlying concern, just assuming people don't return back to their former patterns if we need to market anything or give any additional dollars anywhere. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so other items to know, obviously, we all know that income tax is going to be impacted um, with people working remotely. Um, I was hoping I would be able to provide some insight on that, but there really aren't enough returns filed yet for us to have a good sense of how many people are excluding income, um, asking for those refunds. Uh, we haven't seen, I mean, we've seen refunds, we've seen bigger refunds than our previous year, right? We only have one year of experience, um, and it's the first year. Um, so it's kind of hard to base if that's a normal year. Um, so, you know, I'm going to say, I think my estimates are conservative. Um, so I'm hopeful that it performs better than the estimates I have. Um, but until the returns are filed, I I really am not going to know. Uh, and then, of course, we extended the due date to June first to kind of mirror what the federal government is doing, because it's kind of hard to file your um, local income tax return without your federal income tax return being done. So we've extended it to June first rather than April thirtieth.
I had a question, um, as I was reading through the executive summary about the income tax. It's not exactly related, but um, it's the offset amount that goes to pay the difference for the reduction in property taxes. Um, and I guess like I never really considered the fact that property tax revenue changes over the course of this income tax. And I was wondering if that is adjusted. Um, I guess like how how are we coming up with that number of what we owe ourselves to offset that tax?
Yep, to calculate that number, I take the taxable value for all property that is assessed the city operating mileage. So all property is subject to the city operating mileage because of the four twenty-five agreements that we have. So some are still at a township rate. So those values are not included, but o- only the ones that have a city operating mileage. So I take that taxable value. And because we did a five mil reduction, so we went from the seventeen point five three six two to twelve point five three six two. I take that taxable value times five mils and that's how I come up with the dollar amount to make the general fund whole.
So it's not a flat rate across the life of the income tax. It's adjusted yearly.
Correct.
And then that is, so over the course of the income tax, that number is going to grow. But we are hoping that the income tax revenue also grows so that we're not taking less of it over time, but.
Yes, yeah. I mean, in general, I would expect income tax revenue to grow faster than property tax. So generally, property tax is capped by proposal A and Headley. So, um, you know, your assessed value may grow, but taxable value doesn't necessarily grow at the same rate.
I guess that's, that actually was another, another thing that I flagged in the executive summary. Um, and the property taxes where the citywide taxable value grow at grew at three point six and revenue increased by one point nine. Is that primarily due to that heavily limit or is there something else factoring that difference?
It also has to do with the TIF capture. So a lot of the growth in total taxable value has been for brownfield projects, right? So Park District, um, Center City. So that's part of that tax, you know, the city's taxable value. But obviously, the general fund doesn't get to um, collect that full amount, right? Because it's it's going to the brownfield capture.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right, so kind of changing topics a little bit. Um, citywide, we assumed a two percent cost of living adjustment. So we have four union contracts that are in place for fiscal year twenty-two. And they are at that two percent. We do have three other um, bargaining units that are just beginning the negotiation. We do have three other um bargaining units that are just beginning the negotiation process. Um, so there's some risk there, um. If if it doesn't land at two percent. Then we also have OPEB, so remember, OPEB is Other Post Employment Benefits, and so for us, that's retiree healthcare. The state came out with Public Act two oh two. And what that did is it did a couple of things. One of them was to identify local units that were underfunded. And so we trigger that for pension. We do not trigger that for OPEB. Um, but also part of Public Act two oh two is you have to pre-fund the normal cost. Of any promised healthcare at retirement for employees hired after June thirty twenty eighteen. For the city of East Lansing, that only is police and fire related. Those are the only um groups that still have a promise of healthcare after retirement. And it's, I will say, it's a diminished um benefit from what it used to be. They have, I think, ten years um from retirement to s- um Medicare age that we provide the healthcare. So we have to pre-fund that for those employees on an annual basis. Um, the amount is determined by the actuary, and we have been contributing a hundred thousand annually. Which has been enough to cover that, but as we get more new police and fire employees, we're going to have to increase that amount. So um, just a heads up, right now it's at a hundred thousand, but in the future, we will have to start increasing that. And then finally, um, very important to um, to the city, I believe. Is we are still continuing to make that supplemental pension payment. Um, it's nearly five point one million dollars in the twenty two budget. With one million five fifty coming from the general fund and three million five thirty five coming from. Um, the income tax fund. Now, again, I think I'm being conservative in the income tax fund. So likely, um, it could be more, right? And kind of if I jump to this next slide, and I showed you guys this at the forecast. Um, meeting, but this is showing our contributions, our supplemental contributions to the pension plan. Um, over the last six years. And you can see in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, that's pre-income tax. Um, so there was, you know, pressure on the general fund, but the general fund. You know, it was a priority of the city to still try to fund or pre-fund the pension as much as possible. So you can see the efforts that were made. Then if you get into fiscal year twenty, you can see there's nearly five point six million dollars. Of um supplemental pension payments. And then in fiscal year twenty one, we're nearing this, you know, we're over six point seven million dollars. So we're making significant contributions to the pension plan. I'm hopeful that we will start seeing that in um, our our valuations. And that we start seeing our percentage um funded ratio going up. But my point here is, you know, general fund in fiscal year twenty one, we budgeted two point five million. Even though income tax was doing better, we still were committed and stayed with that um plan, right? We still contributed two and a half million out of the general fund. Um, so that's why we're coming up closer to a seven million dollar mark versus that five million dollar mark. Anybody have any questions on the supplemental pension? Okay. And George touched on this already a little bit, like what's not included in the budget document, but I'm gonna go through this a little bit. Um, you know, when we sat down and started the twenty two budget. Our goal was to sustain operations without the use of one-time sources of revenue, right? So we wanted to adjust our expenditures to what our current revenue projections are. That's not an easy task. Um, there was lots of difficult decisions. Um, things are deferred, you know, to be frank, there's capital improvements that are being deferred. Um, but I think with a plan, right, we know there's these one-time sources of revenue. We know there's potential to backfill our lost revenue. So then we're going to add those projects to the list of items that we want to do with these one-time sources of revenue. Um, so as George mentioned, the American Rescue Plan Funds. Uh, this was effective in March of twenty twenty one. The last estimates that were out um showed the city at twelve and a half million of funds. Um, which is an extraordinary amount of money for the city. And we would receive half of it in May of twenty twenty one, and we'll get the rest of it in May of twenty twenty two. We're still waiting for guidance from US Treasury. Um, the broad categories right now are addressing revenue losses experienced. Covering costs that have been incurred in responding to the public health emergency. We could provide support for economic recovery. And we can invest in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So those are the four pillars is what they're calling them. Um, but obviously, that there's a lot of details and questions underneath each of those pillars. Um, so we do expect some guidance to come out with the money or prior to the money coming out in May. Um, but I also expect that there'll be continued guidance over the coming year. Um, as people ask questions, ask for clarity on how we can spend these dollars. We do have to have all the money spent by calendar, end of calendar year twenty twenty four. Um, and I think our goal is to invest strategically, right? We want to bring everybody to the table, talk about what makes the most sense for the whole community. Um, the other thing not included is you may recall the governor's proposal in the state budget. Included seventy million to income tax communities with the city allocated to allocated two point two million. Um, for that lost income tax money due to remote working. Um, that's not included in this budget as either. Also not included in here is the sale of the property to MSU FCU. So now that that has actually happened, uh, last week, I believe, was when it closed. Um, there's eight hundred thousand dollars. That is in addition to what our year on estimate sho- estimates showed. We also have the um potential sale of vacant West Road property. So you may recall, we have this property up on Rest West Road, um, that is marketed for sale. There is no intention to, um. There's, there's no, we don't have a plan, I guess, or a known sale. I'm just saying that we have that out there. And then we also have Chesterfield Rental Conversion Program. That is not part of the budget um document either. So we have that three hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, um, restricted for that purpose. Property tax millage rates, not really gonna go through this. I think um, you can take a look at what the history of the property tax rates have been. The one thing I will note is the library has two mills. One is approved by council, one was approved by voters. The one that was approved by voters expires in November of twenty twenty two. Um, so fiscal year twenty three would be the final year unless that is extended or renewed. Um, and then the only other thing I'd like to point out is operating millage is at twelve point five three six two. That full five mil reduction and this, and we're um limited to thirteen mils when an income tax is in place. By the charter. Okay, now I'm gonna jump more into general fund specifically, so if you go to page four of the document. You can see that the twenty two budget's at thirty nine point five million. It's balanced with no use of fund balance. Um, as I mentioned, we projected revenues and then we matched our expenditures to that amount. So we have a decrease of almost one point one million from the from the twenty one budget, which was pre-pandemic. Um, George had already mentioned the fiscal year twenty, we did use a small amount of fund balance. We used about four hundred, just over four hundred thousand, which was not expected. And that pushed our fund balance down to thirteen point seven um of unassigned. With a total fund balance of sixteen point four. Um, in fiscal year twenty one, we expect to end the year adding more than a million dollars. Um, we've talked about how we've done that. Um, so namely, you know, the CARES Act, we got about one point six million dollars in grants. And so that is a huge part of why we are able to add a million dollars in fund balance in fiscal year twenty one. Um, again, all one-time sources of revenue, um, but definitely very important to help us through the pandemic. The ending fund balance for the general fund is about seven point four million. That's equal to eighteen point seven percent of the expenditures. And if I were to leave all the restrictions and assignments on the same, it would be about sixteen percent for unassigned fund balance. And remember that there's a city council policy out there that recommends eight to fifteen percent. Um, so being at sixteen percent um is a good place to be. I promise I'd walk through the statement of fund balance um real quick for you. So at the bottom of page four. You can see it shows that there's fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty. It then shows the anticipated amount for twenty twenty one. So in this case, one million, one thousand two hundred and sixty five dollars. So that's our fiscal year twenty one year end estimate. Um, and then there's no planned use in twenty twenty two. So the ending twenty one is also the projected ending twenty two. So you'll see that statement of fund balance on most funds. Um, we don't do that for the enterprise funds or the internal service funds because they don't really use the same kind of fund balance. It's full accrual versus modified accrual. Okay. General fund revenues, um, here's one of my pretty pictures. Um, so this is more of just a picture to show you kind of throughout the years, the revenues for the general fund. Um, you can see, you know, we kind of hovered in that thirty three to thirty five million for a long time. Um, property taxes grew slowly, again, because of proposal A and Headley. You know, property taxes just don't grow that quickly. Um, you can see in fiscal year twenty that property tax amount drops. That's because of the five mil reduction with the income tax. You can also see in twenty, obviously, the very top section, that's the income tax dollars coming into the general fund. And then you'll also notice in um fiscal year twenty, it's kind of hard to notice maybe, but the intergovernmental revenue also increased. And that was because of PA two eighty nine. So PA two eighty nine is fire protection revenues. And um, that is increasing, that increased one point six million in fiscal year twenty, when the state decided to fund that program fully. Uh, so we talked about property taxes. We're seeing an increase, one point four percent over the twenty one estimates. Residential values remain very strong. We might see some decrease in assessed value for commercial. Um, but there's still a good amount of gap, so when I say gap, I mean the difference between the assessed value and the taxable value. Um, so with that gap, that kind of allows us some decreases in assessed without impacting taxable. Intergovernmental revenue is at nine point nine, very consistent with what we would budget in the past. The big difference here is twenty one's year end estimate is eleven point eight million. So this is where all that grant money is showing, um, one point six million in cares. Um, another two fifty of unanticipated grants, namely for the clerk. There was a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the clerk. Revenue sharing, you know, twenty one, we thought was going to be bad, but it came in just under the budgeted amount of six million dollars. We forecasted fiscal year twenty two to be down approximately ninety thousand, and that's based on the governor's proposal. So she is recommending an increase in statutory revenue sharing or the CVTRS. But the total sales tax collection is projected to be less, therefore, the constitutional amount would go down. And then we're reckon, we're um projecting PA two eighty nine, the fire protection money to remain flat at the three point three five million. And then other big items in intergovernmental revenue would be the specialty court grants for the fifty four B district courts. We also have CDBG sidewalk funding. We also have the fire staffing grants called the SAFER grant, and then we have the judicial compensation reimbursement. Charges for services, two point four million. So this is an area that was significantly impacted by COVID. Um, the twenty one budget was three point four million, so we're down about a million dollars. We expect the year end, the the current year to end at one point nine million. Um, you know, ambulance services are down significantly, and that's due to run volume being down. Fiscal year twenty one is expected to be down nearly forty five percent from that of what was what happened in fiscal year nineteen. Uh, fiscal year twenty two, you know, we expect it to go back up to about nine hundred and fifty thousand to allow for an increase. But that's still only equal to seventy five percent of what happened in fiscal year nineteen. So we're still allowing for decreased activity in the city. Court cost charges are dependent on cases, um, and somewhat follows the fines. So the twenty one budget is was six hundred and fifty thousand, the twenty one year end estimate is two hundred and ten thousand. So this is a significant impact to the budget. Um, for twenty two, we don't, we did not increase it much. Um, we put it at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then this is also an area that's gonna be impacted by the clean slate legislation. Um, public safety services for MSU, obviously with MSU not having as many events, whether it's athletics or other types of events. Um, the city public safety groups, police and fire have assisted MSU in the past. And MSU has paid for that assistance um on campus in their buildings. So that is an area um that was hit significantly in twenty one. And then we expect it to return a little bit or most of the way, so we put that at about eighty percent of a normal year. And then another, just another small thing, the school resource officer for East Lansing Schools, that position was eliminated. Which was a reduction of about forty thousand. And then we have no planned sidewalk assessments for fiscal year twenty one or fiscal year twenty two. Fines and forfeitures, I think, um, everybody is aware is down, um, decreased activity, decreased um citations. Um, we budgeted one point, almost one point two million dollars. Previous budgets were over, just over two million. We expect fiscal year twenty one to end at nine hundred and eighty thousand. Um, you know, we did bump up twenty two. Um, we increased ordinance fines by fifty thousand, which is a twelve and a half percent increase. We increased parking fines by a hundred and thirty thousand, which is a twenty two point eight percent increase. You know, these numbers are simply educated guesses, I think, until we get back to some normal activity. We don't know what our new normal is going to be. Um, so this is, I guess, an area of uncertainty um in the budget. And then finally, we have the transfer from the income tax, and that's shown as part of other financing sources. The fiscal year twenty one budget was six point five, fiscal year twenty one year and estimate seven point one. So I'll get into that with the income tax fund, but basically fiscal year twenty did better than expected. Um, so we were able to allocate more in twenty one. Um, fiscal year twenty two is projected at seven point one million, so kind of flat with what we think is going to happen in twenty one. Of that seven point one million, five point nine is for the um making the general fund whole for reduced property taxes. And the one point two million is the estimate of the twenty percent public safety allocation. So personnel changes. Um, if you look at the personnel summary, you'll see that for the general fund. We're down three full-time positions, we're up two part-time positions. So net difference of one full-time, part-time headcount, and we're down eighteen hundred and seventy nine contingent hours. Um, some of the highlights you can see here, city manager's office, we budgeted for the first time the DEI administrator. Fifty four B, we froze one court deputy clerk position, so that took him from six to five. The police department, George already highlighted this, but we added the two full-time social workers. We added four part-time NRS positions. We eliminated five sworn officer positions with one being a lieutenant and four being officers. Uh, we've reclassed a part-time admin assistant to a full-time position, and we've eliminated one part-time pace clerk. In engineering, we eliminated a design engineer position. And we reclassified the engineering administrator to a deputy director, and then it kind of lists out those other contingent hour changes. Um, one thing I would like to add is when I say eliminated or froze, those aren't layoffs or anything like that. It's, it's um, taking advantage of attrition. So um, just wanna clarify when I say eliminated. For expenditures, personnel services is obviously the biggest part of the budget. Um, thirty million dollars, which is. Um, thirty million dollars, which is sixty nine percent of the total. Um, fiscal year twenty one's budget was thirty point seven million. We expect to come in at twenty nine point nine, which is a two point six percent savings. This is primarily due to holding positions vacant, reducing overtime. Um, but it still includes the two and a half million of supplemental pension payments. Fiscal year twenty two is increasing um just under three hundred thousand over the twenty one estimate. Um, it does factor in the two percent COLA, scheduled step increases, expected retirements. Uh, also accounts for the personnel changes we just talked about, um, as well as continued reduction in overtime. Our MERS regular D B defined benefit costs um are expected to increase over seven hundred thousand dollars for the general fund. And we are able to decrease supplemental pension payment um from the general fund by about nine hundred and fifty thousand. So that kind of offsets that increase in the normal cost. On the operating side, um fiscal year twenty one's budget was ten point two. We expect to come in at nine point eight. A lot of that is just choosing to defer things. Nobody was doing trainings, obviously, people weren't going places. Um. And then just deferring other projects um along about throughout the year. Fiscal year twenty two, we expect to return to somewhat normal operations um with people going back to trainings and doing some of the studies and projects. Um, but it also includes D E I training for all city employees. And we also expect a significant increase in drain assessments, um specifically for the Montgomery drain. The indirect cost allocation, this is how we allocate general government costs out to other funds. So we um normally do a study to adjust this, but without a normal year, it's kind of hard to do a study. Um, so we're going to postpone doing that study until we have a full year under our belt, a a full normal year under our belt, I suppose. Um, so we simply did an adjustment this year to account for the changes that were going on in those departments. Capital outlay, very minimal, hundred and ninety thousand was.
Uh, indirect cost allocations are other funds paying the general fund for services. So like if the water sewer fund uses accounting services or finance services or human resource services, they reimburse the general for those services because they don't have their own departments. So that's what the indirect cost allocation comes from. Thanks.
Uh, so capital outlay sidewalk improvements of one seventy five um with a hundred and twenty five thousand potentially being funded through C D B G. And then playground equipment replacement of fifteen thousand. That's as needed. That's not an identified project. Transfers out are two point five million, and most of that is Parks and Recreation, so two point two million of that is Parks and Recreation. This includes about seventy two thousand over what we would normally give them. So usually we could do a C P I increase each year. Um, and so in twenty two, it's about seventy two thousand more than what they would normally get. Um, and obviously, this is still due to the COVID and impact to the programs. In fiscal year twenty one, we do expect um we'll need a budget amendment, and they will need an additional subsidy of four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. Um, so as expenditures still occur without any of the revenues, um, you know, they they need additional assistance. Seniors, um, about one hundred and forty six thousand dollars. Uh, there's no increase for the seniors program at this time. Um, as they're able to balance their budget without additional subsidy. The capital improvement fund has about eighty six thousand dollars and for the Avondale Square. Project, so that's the debt associated with the Avondale Square. There is no other um capital improvement dollars suggested at this time. Debt service is about fifty eight thousands for debt that was issued for facility improvements. Public art fund is at twenty one thousand six seventy with seventeen thousand five hundred for the art commission funding, which is for the cultural art grants. Um, and then the percent of art requirement calculates out to about four thousand dollars. So as we have less capital outlay, there's less percent of our money going to the public art fund. And then the art festival fund is staying flat at ten thousand dollars annually as part of the support for that festival. Okay, so that's the general fund. Does anybody have any other specific questions? I know that was very quick and very broad. Um. I'm happy to answer other questions, though.
Yeah, so guys, this is, this is the, an opportunity uh to definitely, I mean, a lot of our departments fall into the general fund. Uh, and again, I'm going to say this as many times as I can. Feel free to continue to ask questions throughout this, this next month, whenever you do have uh those before we go and and pass this full budget, but this is an opportunity to really ask questions about a number of different items um that that fall into our general fund. It is, tends to be the the most um let's say broad, and we we have a lot of members of our staff here that are uh very willing to to uh to answer anything that that we have or or get us answers later on. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I was just considering um some things coming out of uh police oversight that may have expenses tied to them. I don't know when that, if those would be the twenty twenty two budget or beyond. Um, but there there, there's question marks and things outstanding that may have budgetary. I'm, I'm sure nothing that's gonna, you know, move the needle on the large numbers, but it still could be something that needs to be factored in.
We've been discussing that internally already about how we could staff that differently in terms of administrative support. So there's already been discussions, and I think that uh um, we're not ready to make a recommendation because we haven't seen the recommendation yet, but it's something.
Well, I figured, I figured you're on top, but it's just kind of sticking out of my mind. And then things around um um, the questions on early warning systems and things along those lines as far as budgeting for things like that. I just, I don't, I don't know what the exact recommendations are going to be, so that'll be something to consider down the road.
Thanks.
Jill, would this be an appropriate time to ask questions about specific, let's say, funds within the general fund?
Yep.
Great. Um, so I wanted to uh note something on communication and cable services. Uh, so this is just a question for um maybe even George more so than Jill. Um, but as much as I appreciate the incredible amount of work that folks like Emily and Nicole and others do to, and Chris uh and his, his department do to make sure that we have virtually accessible meetings. Um, as we kind of move into the next year, uh, I I want to throw the idea out there um of maybe creating a position, maybe it could be part-time or not, that would be dedicated towards kind of running uh a lot of these virtual meetings. This tends to be something that's fairly time-consuming for for folks to do. It is a little bit complicated, especially when you do have uh a lot of people and a lot of factors that are that are rolling in and out. Um, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I think that the accessibility of these meetings to actually have people be able to participate at a council meeting or at a commission meeting without actually having to physically be there is really great, and I think that it has improved the ability for folks in our community to get involved in local government. And I would like to figure out how we can actually continue that post pandemic. And so I throw it out there as an idea, um, because as I was thinking about this budget and I was, as I was reading a little bit more uh into especially the communications department, I thought to myself, well, this might be a cool opportunity to maybe test something like this out. So I wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah. It's something we're having discussions internally about with with I T, about thinking about what sort of technology solutions we would need to do that. So it's a, it's, it's a discussion that's happening in terms of what we would need in terms of staffing. I don't think we're ready to see what that would look like yet, but it's certainly something we're considering and working on.
Great, all right. Um, and then I had a couple other things, but I'm, I'm more than happy to open it up to other council members. We can do a round robin. That's okay with me as well. All right, I'll go on to my next one. Um, in terms of housing licenses inspections, I just touched on uh an increase in allocated budget due to credit card fees and uh increased transactions. And I I just wanted to ask as a clarification, I think I know the answer already. We cover those credit card fees across the board, correct? Um, with with everything that that folks pay towards the city? That was a rule that we put in place a while ago.
The only um credit card transaction that we don't cover is property taxes.
Okay.
But every other credit card transaction, yes, is covered by the city.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, um, and then um I had a question that I I sent an email in a, in a little bit more of a detailed manner. Um, but we previously had um a civil infraction before marijuana was legalized within the city of East Lansing at twenty five dollars uh for a ticket of possession of under an ounce if you are above the age of twenty one. Um, and then previous to that, uh fines could be in the, in the several hundreds of dollars and even possibly carry uh higher sentences and and costs for you just because of the state law and the federal law. Um, and I had wondered if I could get any information if we still have any outstanding costs. Um, so folks that may have never paid uh those monies um that that we still have outstanding. Um, that's something that can be answered uh at a future um via email or something like that, but I did, I did want to know. Uh, because I think that actually might be the first place that we look to to try and utilize some of those marijuana dollars that are coming in.
We can ask the court.
Great. Thanks.
I had a question. Um. The entertainment licenses. Um, this was actually, I think I flagged it in the performance measures section of the budget because it was um my question was really about the number that was issued. So it's under the clerk and election section, and there's ten entertainment licenses issued. And I guess I just was wondering what kind of entertainment that is licensing. Um, ten seemed like a weirdly small number, but also I wasn't sure what those were, so. If there's any explanation for that, mostly for my curiosity.
Yep, can we flip uh Jennifer over to active participant?
Is there a page you're looking at too?
Um, uh, yes, it's Roman numeral X I X. Uh, which is wait, like nineteen? Am I remembering my Roman numerals correctly?
Nobody knows.
I don't know Romans.
So Schuster, go ahead.
Uh, yes, so the entertainment licenses are ones that usually go around um hand in hand with like the restaurant licenses too. So it would be places like Harper's and things that would have those dual licenses together. And those are down this year, obviously because of COVID.
Yeah, so I guess like uh what it, what it's like if they have live entertainment in addition to serving alcohol, so like every so it's just one blanket license to say sometime this year, we're going to have a open mic night? Or do they have to get a license for every single event?
Yes, so it it is. It's good for that whole year. That's absolutely.
So just any business that kind of would self-identify as somebody that would want to have a performance uh inside their business would apply for one. Okay.
The DJ and the dance floor also apply for that, not just the live performance, but.
Oh, got it. Okay. Um, yeah, because I guess like, you know, um, in terms of increasing engagement in our um downtown business core entertainment seems like something we would want to be encouraging. Um, and then ten just seems like a strangely small number, so I was kind of wondering what that referred to. Okay, thank you. Um, I think I'm just looking through my flags here.
Your part time, do you mind if I ask a follow-up on that?
Oh, go ahead. No, I think I'm done. I think that's my only one. My other one is really much more specifically about parking, and I think I'll get into that when we actually start talking about the parking fund.
Great. Uh, Clerk Schuster, um, would you mind uh getting, and this doesn't need to be today, but um, if you could give a brief explanation of kind of how those entertainment licenses are calculated in terms of costs? Because are, are, are they different for each business um based on like square footage and impact around the area?
Yes, so most of our licenses are based on maximum capacities, so there's a graduated scale, and those amounts are based on the occupancy rates.
Okay, could we get a breakdown um of kind of where those costs are in terms of the licenses that were put out there?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to mention to council, it is our intent to come back to council with a discussion. We typically bill these in May, our restaurant and business licenses and entertainment licenses, and come back for a discussion on whether we want to charge that this time or forego it again as we did last year. And I think our recommendation would be considering foregoing it, but that's a conversation we want to have with council. So we won't be billing it until we have that conversation.
Council members, feel free to just chime in anytime.
But actually, this is totally random and not related to anything we've talked about, but I was just thinking about fees and um and licensing, and I was just, and I noticed that the scooters are back, and I was kind of wondering um, how that worked out for us last year, and if we're like, uh, because I know that we had a blanket license fee, and then we had a per ride fee, and I was just kind of wondering what that looked like when it came in, and if it's in here somewhere. Sorry, I missed it.
So right now we have the um annual fee, which is twenty five hundred dollars, and then the ten cents per ride that originates in the city of East Lansing. Um, that is reflective of what the city of Lansing did when they started their program as well. And those are the same fees they're continuing to charge.
And we, did we receive some of those last year from the businesses that did operate in town? I know it was a pretty truncated uh year because of, you know, the general terribleness, but.
Um, yes, it was, it was pretty spotty. We're still trying to collect um money from one of the businesses. And then we currently have um bird scooters are currently operating. Um, and we have two that are also currently applying as well. So that's where I stand with that right now.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Any question? Some questions. Um, can you remind me, does staff get overtime?
Um, so it depends on the position. We have hourly positions, which probably are a majority of our positions. And then we have the regular salaried managerial and executive positions that are exemptions based on the Fair Labor Standards Act. So I would guess probably seventy five percent of our positions are hourly or more, eighty percent perhaps are hourly, and the rest are salaried. That's just a rough guess.
I'm thinking more about the faces and names that I see during these meetings, like those folks. Are they?
Primarily salaried basis.
And do you know their average number of hours that they're, that they put in?
Yeah, this is something we talk about. It varies pretty significantly. You know, Jill, a couple weeks ago, will tell you how many she's working, and it's probably pretty scary. And then, and then same thing for Jennifer during an election period. And then things equal out a little bit more during the year. So sometimes they're slower, sometimes they're more busy, depending on your position. So that's kind of the way it goes. They're cyclical depending on your job. But beyond forty five to uh, when someone works an additional five hours or more, that typically we try to adjust people's schedule within the week so that if they have a very heavy week, they can adjust off um time within the week, within the work week only. But that doesn't always work that way because sometimes when you have a very busy week, um, you can't take time off because it's very busy. So it's kind of part of the job, but we try to accommodate people's schedules.
Okay, it makes me think more too about what the mayor was saying about that additional position to help support like these type of meetings. Thank you.
Other questions for Jill, George? Or any member of uh staff that's on with us today? All right. Um, well, then, um, did you have anything else for us, Jill?
Yep, I'm gonna run through the income tax fund real quick.
Please do.
Ideas on that, so we will do that real quick here. Um, can everybody see my screen again? Yes. Um, income tax fund, so this is page fifty eight of the document. It was the first part of the special revenue funds. Um. I'm gonna talk kind of about tax year, and then I'm going to show you fiscal year. So obviously, the tax year doesn't line up with our fiscal year. Um, but so I'm trying to treat tax year twenty nineteen as fiscal year twenty, tax year twenty as fiscal year twenty one. So just kind of keep that in mind as we're talking. Um, so tax year twenty nineteen, first year of the income tax, right, for the city. We didn't expect that to be a normal year because the first year of anything isn't a normal year. You have to have get compliance. Um, not all employers began withholding right away in January. Quarterly estimates were not required um in the first year. Then COVID hit, filing date was extended to July thirty first rather than April thirtieth. Um, at the end of fiscal year twenty, we really didn't have a clear picture of what tax year twenty nineteen was going to produce. Um, as of the end of March, so a couple weeks ago, income tax net of refunds for tax year twenty nineteen was thirteen point seven million. Uh, we're still receiving returns for twenty nineteen. As people are filing twenty twenty, they realize they should have filed the twenty nineteen. Um, we will also begin compliance efforts um beginning. We will also begin compliance efforts beginning this summer. So that means looking for businesses, employers and residents and non-residents who maybe didn't file a return and they should have. Now we moved to tax year 20. It's an unknown impact of remote work for non-residents. The filing date was extended to June 1. So again, that's a little bit delayed. And when we're going to know the answer to the impact, we're currently processing returns that have been filed. It is taking additional time for our third party processor to go through the returns because of the exclusions that people can take for COVID-19 and the documents that are required as part of that. So we're sending more letters and having to do more follow up than a normal year would expect. So when I talked about my estimates, I think they're conservative. I hope they're conservative to share with you what my estimate was is I assume that 80% of non-residents of their withholding would be returned to them for remote work for March through December. So I'm saying 80% of non-residents are going to get a refund for that entire time of March through December. I'm hopeful that's conservative. I really don't know a good way to estimate this, but that's, that's the numbers I'm using. For, yep.
Yep. On the 2019 tax, the stuff is still outstanding. Will there be penalties, interest, things like that? Is there a grace period that's going to be extended for individuals?
So people who should have filed a return and didn't, they will have penalty and interest. You know, in circumstances, we are allowed to waive certain fees, but not all of them under the tax act. So we are doing our best to be fair with our residents and non-residents with the first year of the income tax.
I think when, if, and when we move forward with that process, I definitely would like the talking point. So I could better understand that. Cause I'm sure it's going to come up from individuals asking who failed to file or didn't quite understand the filing process yet. Kind of what those interests and penalties are going to look like. So.
Sure. Yep. We can get more information on that.
Thank you.
Yep. And then now we're moving into tax year 2021, right? So we're in tax year 21. There's going to be continued impact from people working remotely. The budget did assume that most people would return to workspaces in East Lansing by July. Like I said, like this resurgence has given me a little bit of concern, I guess, that this could be delayed. Now, obviously it's not going to be worse than tax year 2020 because most of 2020 people were working from home. And you know, the only impact it's going to have, I shouldn't say only, but the impact it will have is to the 60 2020 split. It's not going to drop below the number to be able to reimburse the general fund. It's going to reduce that 60 2020 split. And then again, it's not including any lost revenue makeup from the feds or the state, which I think is a legitimate option for the city. Now this graph kind of shows income tax fund by fiscal year. So remember I said that fiscal year 20 performed better than I expected. So I was very conservative again in my estimates. And when the, and the, when the numbers came in over the summertime, we found out that our revenue was actually closer to 13.8 million. And I only allocated out less than 10 million. So you can see here in this graph revenues up here, but I only allocated out this much money. This was admin. This was general fund, making the general fund whole for property taxes. And then this was the 60 2020 split that I, that I actually sent out of that fund. Now for a budget, I'm always going to budget revenues equal to expenditures, right? Cause my goal is always to allocate 100% of what we get. What's really going to happen in 21 is our revenue is projected to come here. Our expenditures are exceeding it because I'm trying to make up for what I should have allocated back here in 2020. Does that ever make sense to everybody? So this is really showing use of fund balance. And then this is the estimate for 2022. Again, this is allowing for a half a year of remote work with 80% of the people, you know, getting a refund. Again, unknowns. So I just kind of want to lay it out like this because the tax year is so different than the fiscal year and with us having to estimate, it's hard for me to allocate when I'm making estimates. But I'm, I'm hopeful I will continue to be conservative in my estimates and will always have more money later to, to spend.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? Um, so residents, non-residents who end up working remotely from their own homes, not in East Lansing would then end up paying the 1% to their home district as opposed to splitting that with East Lansing. If they live in a community.
Yes.
And then so, but then any East Lansing resident who worked out of East Lansing would have the reverse impact, right? So we, we should be gaining a little bit from people who ended up working from home in East Lansing. But just because our, just because MSU was such a major employer and they have so many employees, we're assuming that we're going to come up on the wrong side of that. Is that kind of the logic between?
Yes.
We're going to gain that half percent back from residents who are working in their houses that are now fully working in East Lansing.
We could gain some from that. It depends on if our residents are choosing to do that, right? Because they likely paid into, let's say they work, let's say they worked in Lansing previously. They live in East Lansing. They are probably still paying into Lansing throughout the year. So technically what they would have to do is ask for a refund from Lansing and they would have to pay East Lansing. So it's actually a lot of work for somebody to change their Lansing, you know, ask for a refund from Lansing and then give the money to East Lansing.
And we don't have a good enforcement mechanism for tracking that down and saying like, hey, we think you owe us some money.
Correct. Even know if it's enforceable. You know what I mean? Like this is such a unique situation.
Yeah. So we're assuming that take the action that would result in financial benefit to them because it would be worth it, but that they would not take an action just to transfer money from one government to another because unless they were, you know, extremely scrupulous. And then we don't have a great way to track it down in terms of tracking those people. No. Okay. Understood.
Correct. And it could be, it could benefit us the same way, right? Somebody lives in Lansing. They're not going to go through the effort to take the money from East Lansing and pay it to Lansing. So to me, it's kind of a wash, maybe. It's kind of an unknown as well because it's, it's really a choice by the taxpayer of how they want to handle their taxes.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Very complicated. Income taxes not.
Well, because you know, because I, obviously we've been talking about a lot about the financial impact, but I kind of wondered throughout the course of that conversation, why we assumed that it would all be bad, but that makes sense.
Okay. Any other questions on income tax? I don't have any other slides for income tax. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to move on. I have a couple of slides. I just want to highlight a few other funds that have significant changes that aren't part of a future budget work session. So I'm not going to talk about anything that we're going to have a future session on, but I do want to highlight these couple of funds. Library Fund, page 96. So their primary revenue source is property taxes, which is about 2.2 million. And then they have about 300,000 of donations. They are using a significant amount of fund balance. They're using almost half of their fund balance in fiscal year 22. And that is due to planned capital improvements, right? So they want to replace the HVAC system. Maybe I should say want to, they need to replace the HVAC system. There, there's roof repairs that are needed, parking lot resurfacing and reangling, updates to the electric system. And then regrading and replacement of sidewalks and ramps outside of their building. So, you know, they had about 2.2 million of fund balance and that's going to reduce down to about 1.1 million. The art festival fund is just page 110. The 2021 festival has been postponed to August, as you're probably aware. So there's actually going to be two festivals that occur in fiscal year 22. So that's kind of skewing the budget numbers. So 2021 is going to be a little bit smaller and 2022 is going to be bigger in, in dollar wise. There is a new chart that we added to that section that kind of breaks out, you know, the fiscal year with the festivals. So without looking at it, you know, it's, it's a little confusing, but if you have questions when you're, when you're studying that part, let us know. We're happy to explain it further. So their fund balance is only expected to be at $9,100, which is 4%. So that is a small amount of fund balance. You know, they tried to adjust their activities based on their donations and fundraising. But it's also hard to change at the last minute if something doesn't come in. So just a heads up, you know, that if donations or artist fees don't materialize, that would require the general fund to keep them out of a deficit if they were to go below or use more than that $9,100. Computer services, which is page 156. Obviously with working from home, there was a lot of things that needed to happen over the last year. Infrastructure changes. We've added 50 plus computers so people can work remotely. We've needed to add security measures. We've also increased our cyber liability insurance. Because of, you know, our constraints and our concerns, we did limit the increase in charges to departments, which is resulting in some use of fund balance in the computer fund. And then we will need to rebuild fund balance at some point as we'll need to replace the phone system. We need to replace servers and switches, all their kind of life cycle issues. Again, though, maybe we can use some of these one-time sources of revenue to help fund those projects. And then the DDA just wanted to kind of highlight that they have a lot of stuff in their narrative about all the efforts they did during the pandemic and continue to do to assist the downtown businesses. And then fiscal year 22 budget does not include this whole deal with MSU FCU leasing the land and demoing those buildings. So we will likely bring you some revised numbers before adoption so that we can reflect what the plan is moving forward. So that may adjust revenues. It will definitely adjust expenditures because we had some significant repairs in there. But we also will have the demo, demo costs. So we will provide updated numbers to you prior to adoption for your consideration. And then one positive thing is our Evergreen loan is actually a variable interest rate loan. And because it's based off a LIBOR, LIBOR, which is very, very low right now. It's basically zero. We've saved a lot in interest on that loan this year. Here's the timeline for future budget work sessions. You know, April 20th, 27th, May 11th, we also have the public hearing on May 11th. May 18th, right now is available if you guys would like another budget work session. Usually we leave one empty for any kind of follow up or we just cancel it. It's not something that we have to do. And then May 25th is when we would bring you the resolution. The resolution is different than this budget document. It kind of breaks it down by classification, funded in classification, and then the fee schedule. So you actually adopt a resolution. You don't adopt this preliminary budget document. That's all I have. Any questions?
Great job, Jill. Any other questions?
I feel like I should apologize for calling it boring. I feel like that personally, obviously I meant riveting.
No, I, I get it.
Any other questions for council members? Again, feel free to just email things as we go along. When you ask a question, it will be something that is not only answered to you, but to the rest of the council and then posted on, on the agendas in the future, just as something that individual council members asked. So that way the community can also see the answer to the question that you yourself might, might have. And again, I think the classic adage applies that if you're, you know, thinking in your head, maybe somebody else's too. And so getting that answer is not necessarily a bad thing. But this is kind of the last opportunity for today, at least in person to, to ask questions. So I will open the floor. Go ahead, Lisa.
I don't have a question just yet. I will, but I will say every budget tells a story. So I don't think it's boring. It's a story in a foreign language to me. So. Takes me time to understand it.
Great. Jill, I don't know if we're going to talk about this a little bit more when we actually get to the Parks and Recreation Fund, but in the, in the section transfers out of other funds you had mentioned, and of course you just mentioned in your, in your kind of things to highlight the arts, the public art fund as well, or sorry, on the art festival fund as well. But that, you know, there might need to be a transfer of fund balance to, to kind of maintain those. Do, do we have estimates of where we would be at, especially for Parks and Rec? Are we going to kind of talk about that as we go in? Or is that just something that we're kind of keeping in the back of our head, knowing that it, that it might be a factor in the future?
Are you referring to fiscal year 21?
Um, yeah.
Fiscal year 22. Yeah. So fiscal year 21, we don't expect anybody else to need assistance outside of Parks and Recreation. And that was about another 465,000 over what we budgeted. So what we'll do is come to council for a budget amendment sometime probably in June, when we have maybe more precise numbers. And then we would transfer enough to keep them flat as far as their fund balance. I think Parks and Rec has about $50,000 of fund balance. And so, you know, maybe we split the difference or, you know, we would come to council and have, have that discussion as part of a budget amendment. There are no other funds projected to need assistance at this point in fiscal year 21. Now, obviously if something changes between now and June, we may need to bring, you know, an additional budget amendment to you at that time.
Yeah. And that, and that's kind of a question. I'm sorry. I didn't really know how to answer like 2021 or 2022, but it was just the, the one line that said, in addition, it is likely larger increases will need to be, will be needed going forward to sustain these programs at their current service levels. Which I think is a hundred percent fair and it's something definitely that we need to be ready for, but I, I really just wanted a little bit more context into what that statement was. Like, do we have the numbers behind it? Do we not? Are we, are we, you know, making estimates at this point? Are we more at the place where we know where we are right now? We know what we had to do this past year. But in the future, it, it's, it's dependent on when things really open up, when people are allowed to sign up for things. Is it, is it kind of conditional or do we have an idea going forward?
No, I would say it's conditional. Obviously I make a lot of assumptions when we put the budget together of when do people return to participating in programs at the Hannah Center? When do people, you know, when the aquatic center opens, not this summer, but next summer, are people going to be ready to come back to that kind of an atmosphere?
Right.
So yeah, I think there's a lot of conditional items in here that it's hard to project.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions, guys?
I had a question.
Yep.
I remember in the past that there was cat bus transportation for the art festival. And so was that a part of this budget in the past? And how much was that? And I know they stopped doing it. Have we thought about doing it?
For that was a part of their sponsorship. We can check on that and get an answer for you.
All right. Seeing no other questions at this point. Thank you, Jill. Thank you to your team. Thank you, George. I just, I want to take a moment and this isn't something that we, we get to do very often, but I, I think we should be proud as a city of where we are right now financially. And I, I think that last year around this time, I was terrified. I really was because I didn't know how much we were going to see an impact. We had, you know, we had estimations and we had shutdowns and it was, it was two weeks and then it was. We had, you know, we had estimations and we had shutdowns and it was it was two weeks and then it was a month. And then it was several months. And then it was income tax funds and it was conversations. Jill and I am certain had conversations where, you know, do we do we think that we're gonna get any, you know, money from the state or the federal government? Do we do we think that we're gonna, you know, see any support outwards and I I just when I talk about especially, you know, the impact of some of the monies that are hopefully going to be coming in from the from the state government as well as the federal government. And the impact that we've had, obviously, it's going to be something very, very helpful to us. But we planned for not having those luxuries. And we had a lot of really difficult decisions to make over the past year while still trying to spend money to help businesses and help individuals and utilize and run an operation remotely. And do all of this without really knowing what the future held. And so I just want to highlight that seeing where we are right now, although there are still unknowns and there are still factors that we're going to be looking into and still things that we're going to discuss in the future. We're in a really good place and that's not something that's insignificant. And so I'm really proud of the work that the city has done to make that happen. And I'm proud of staff for for making our jobs on council a little bit easier, certainly, as we have this discussion. So thank you. And I'm I'm happy to be having maybe a little bit more of an optimistic conversation than we were last year. So, thanks, guys. All right.
Line between, because I know people may have to stop and grab a bite, or did you want to just stick to the eight minutes that we have or what your, what are the thoughts of council on that?
Anybody have any thoughts? I I was thinking that we could just stick to seven PM, give everybody about an eight minute break. And then and then come back to the council meeting, but I'm more than happy to to extend that to the fifteen to twenty minutes if that's if that's something that's necessary.
I'm okay with the eight. I might turn off my camera so that you guys don't have to watch me eat dinner, but I'll be here.
You know, to to be fair, in when we did this in person, we actually did have about a about a half hour between the meetings. So what what I'll say is for those that are watching right now, we have a regular council meeting that's scheduled right after this. This will be on the same call, so it'll be the same live stream. Is that correct, George?
Correct. We leave it on and it'll just have a green screen.
So what'll happen is you'll see a screen that pops up that says we will be back to our regular council meeting in a second here. Let's let's give everybody until seven ten. And at seven ten, we will begin the next meeting. So that way everybody has a a gum of amount of time to to maybe get something to eat. And yeah, go ahead, Ron.
I want to represent the moms on the call and let them kind of decide. Is it seven twenty? Is it seven? I don't know what's left.
Oh, that that's a good point.
Yeah. I'll I'll go to Dana and Jesse.
I'm okay with seven ten. That's a little bit of extra time and it's not too late to start the other meeting, but also, you know, I eat dinner during meetings all the time. I just have it, so.
All right. Do you need any change of our time, Dana?
Seven ten sounds good.
Great. All right. Save everybody back at seven ten.
All right. See you, guys.
I'm here.
Ron, are you with us? Lisa?
Yep, I'm here.
Great. Lisa? Lisa, you with us? I give her another minute, too. Lisa, one more time. Are you with us? I don't have that texture, just in case. All right, seeing it's a few minutes past the time that we had specified, I'm gonna go ahead and open up this council meeting. Emily, we're live, correct?
That's correct.
All right, great. Thanks, everybody, for being with us, and welcome to this East Lansing City Council regular council meeting. Will their clerk please call the role, keeping in mind our new rules regarding virtual meetings?
Councilmember Babcock.
Councilmember Bacon.
President attending virtually, East Lansing, Michigan, Clinton County.
Councilmember Watson.
You're attending virtually, East Lansing, Michigan, Ingham County.
Mayor Prosser, Greg.
You're attending virtually, East Lansing, Ingham County.
Mayor Stevens.
President attending virtually from East Lansing, Michigan, Ingham County. I want to reflect, Lisa was here for the budget work session. I imagine she is probably just running a couple of minutes behind, so when she arrives, I want the record to reflect, obviously, that she is here. Great. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by the mayor pro temp, motion by councilmember Bacon. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Great, that passes unanimously onto our next item, which is approval of the minutes from our regular council meeting on March 23rd. Any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes, March 23rd, 2021.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Watson, motion by councilmember Bacon. Any discussion? Right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. And I want to reflect, councilmember Babcock has joined us as well.
I was, yeah, a couple of minutes, sorry, my kids were losing their marbles.
All good, thank you very much. All right, our next item on the agenda is communications. First is just an announcement, the written communications received by the council are posted on the online agenda packet under the tab, written communication. Especially throughout this budget process, as we go through, please feel free to email the full council at council@cityofeastlansing.com. All of those communications will be reflected in the written communication and posted on the agenda online, but they do go to all of us, and we see and read every single one, so please feel free to reach out. Next item on the agenda is communication from the audience. I know that we have a number of folks here that have called in. For those folks that have called in, you're gonna have five minutes to speak. You're gonna get a 30-second warning from Emily, our city council assistant. At that point, when you have finished speaking, I will be cutting folks off at five minutes to keep it fair for everybody, so I do apologize if I cut anybody off if they're not finished with their statement. I'm just trying to keep it fair. Great. Emily, would you mind letting in the first caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in 240, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, this is Diane Wing, 1024 Huntington Road. I had sent an email earlier today regarding item 3.1 on the consent agenda. I'm hoping council has had an opportunity to review my concerns and will potentially be moving that item to the business agenda today. But I'm calling more specifically about item 3.4 on the consent agenda, which is restriping of Abbott Road between Saginaw and Lake Lansing, which is essentially going to cause travel lanes go down from four lanes to two lanes in that area. It seems as though the city of East Lansing and the traffic department are still in thrall of this very odd idea that by constricting traffic, you allow traffic to move better. If any of you have either driven Grand River or either of the Harrison Road areas where traffic has been constricted, you know that this type of restriction on a road causes traffic backups lots of times into neighborhood areas, which causes cut-through in the surrounding neighborhood. It causes drivers who want to drive more quickly than a slower driver ahead of them to tailgate that driver. It also causes drivers who are angry that a fellow traveler has to turn right off of one of these roads, is forcing that traveler behind them to slow down. And so the angry traveler will quickly veer off into the left turn lane, going in the wrong direction, of course, in order to pass that particular driver. I just continue, and I've talked to the transportation committee about this before. I know I've had conversations with other council members to, in the past, to say that this idea of constricting lanes in order to get bike lanes added is, still continues to be a concern of mine. Especially this particular area of Abbott Road between Saginaw and Lake Lansing, there's already the Northern Tier Trail that runs parallel to this exact same area. Bicycles already have a way to get north-south through the entire city through the Northern Tier Trail. Then they can connect up east-west to whichever way they're going. To put bike lanes into this area of Abbott is simply going to cause all of those problems for Reno, for the large office building that is just north of Reno's, all of the apartment buildings that line the west side of Abbott Road. So I, I'm sure this is a done deal, and there must be some financial incentive for the city to do this. That's the only thing I can think of. That's the only reason why you would want to cause more traffic problems in the city, is that there's a financial incentive for the city to, to do these restripings and these lane constrictions. But I would continue to, to speak publicly and say, I oppose these, I oppose it for Abbott Road, and I will oppose it even more strongly when it comes up for Coolidge Road, which I know is simply a matter of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Sorry.
Caller with the phone number ending in 386, you are now permitted to address council.
Caller with the phone number ending in 386, if you hit star six on your phone, you should be able to unmute and speak to the full council. There you go.
Jason Nelson here with Graduate Hotels for Agenda Item 3.8.
Great.
Caller with the phone number ending in 400, you are now permitted to address council.
This is Odi Norton, I'm just here in case the council has any questions. Thank you very much.
Caller with the phone number ending in 552, you are now permitted to address council.
Caller ending in 552, you've been unmuted, you can speak to council, or you can simply say pass if you do not wish to speak. One more time, caller ending in 552, I believe you just, oh, you are unmuted as well. Again, you feel free to speak to council, or you can just say pass. All right, Emily, what do you mind going on the next caller?
Hey, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can. Great.
Okay, sorry. All right, it's Kat Edsel, 1026 Daisy Lane, East Lansing, Michigan. A few weeks ago, I participated in the public forum on the commission to form a police oversight committee. The turnout was great, the comments I heard were excellent, and yet, I fear the final product will have little impact on policing in East Lansing. This past weekend, Dante Wright lost his life because he was driving while black. Reportedly, he was stopped by police in Minnesota because he had an air freshener hanging from his rearview mirror. This horrifying injustice, once again, struck really close to home, as my black children have been repeatedly stopped in this community for having our neighborhood parking placard or other such things hanging from their mirrors, and yet, I, a white person, drive undisturbed with my parking placard, my disability placard, and a rainbow tassel hanging from my mirror. No amount of police oversight, no amount of anti-bias training, no amount of body cameras, and no amount of good intentions are going to keep East Lansing police from harming our black and brown community members and visitors from the trauma of being repeatedly pulled over. But, but also from being on the receiving end of the police use of force at significantly higher rates is horrifying. I only imagine we are one bad decision away from our own police murder. When I made comments, similar comments a few weeks ago about the use of force, Councilor Babcock replied, this is not who we are. But the reality is, this is exactly who we are, and until we face that truth, we cannot change it. White people in this community and this kind of country benefit from policing exactly as it is. Until 1968, we legally prohibited black folks from buying homes in East Lansing. Since then, more subtle tactics have been used to keep black people out. Policing, and by that I mean overpolicing of black and brown people, has played a large role. Why? Because black and brown neighbors are still seen as a drag on our home values, our educational opportunities for white children, and security risks. This is exactly who we are. The question is, do we want to make real change in our community regarding policing, or continue to try and put lipstick on a pig? My first suggestion to every council member would be to read Alex S. Vitale's The End of Policing. Then go to defundpolice.org, which is an organization of Black Lives Matter. Both have similar suggestions and solutions. It's time we lead on these issues of policing, but again, this requires the council to get pushy. Here are a few of my suggestions. Be fully engaged in contract negotiations, beginning to end. Make all police officers at-will employees, like the chief and the captains are. Employment records should be protected by the minimalist protections in state law. Remove law enforcement first responders from all non-life-threatening calls. This means fewer armed and uniformed individuals for issues of homelessness, mental health issues, child welfare issues, et cetera. In turn, this means fewer officers on payroll, meaning fewer tickets need to be issued to meet payroll, decreasing racially biased stops. Right sizing our police force. In the oversight draft document, the committee drew a number of recommendations from an ordinance in Albany, New York, where a population of 96,000 has 60 officers and 30 civilians, compared to East Lansing, a city of 48,000 with 50 officers and 50 civilians, also a city that issues 40,000-plus tickets a year. We are clearly overpoliced. Eliminate increasing discipline for use of force violations and any other identity-based policing. Background checks on hiring, including social media, and bias testing with zero tolerance for hate groups on racial bias. Invest in healthcare, housing, income support, and continued expansions of community-based safety strategies. This requires budgeting all departments through a racial equity lens. A couple of recommendations from the commission report that I strongly support is the early tracking system, and the track, desegregate, and report on police stops and police use of force based on, based by officer on race, gender, as well as other identities. Quarterly, do that quarterly. Patterns require immediate discipline removal from the force. Now is the time to reimagine policing. The Oversight Committee is going, only going to scratch the surface. Our entire community needs leadership on this issue. I just want to read a quick quote from the book that I recommend to you. More than anything, however, we really need is to rethink the role of police in society. The origins and function of police are intimately tied to the management of inequalities of race and class. The suppression of workers and the tight surveillance and micromanagement of black and brown lives has always been at the center of policing. Any police reform strategy that does not address this reality is doomed to fail. We must stop looking to procedural reforms and critically evaluate the substantive outcomes of policing. Must continually, I'm sorry, constantly reevaluate what police are asked to do and what impact policing has on the lives of the police. A kinder, gentler, and more diverse war on the poor is still a war on the poor. As Chris Hayes points out, organizing policing around the collection of fees and fines to defund local government undermines the basic ideals of democracy. As long as the police are tasked with waging simultaneous wars on drugs, crimes, disorder, and terrorism, we will have aggressive and invasive policing that disproportionately criminalizes the young, poor, male, and non-white. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kath. Next caller, please.
Caller with the phone number ending in 963, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, this is Alice Trigger. I wanted to thank Emily for the help earlier with regard to meeting access. I also wanted to note that I sent the city manager questions earlier regarding the study of policing attitudes and have not received answers to those questions. I also wanted to ask you for item 2.3 and all cases in the future of this sort of thing, to please indicate which bargaining units you are going into closed session to discuss, even if that's all the bargaining units. It's difficult for us to track these things if that sort of stuff is not made clear to us. One of the reasons I'm interested is because in the budget session earlier, the finance director said that three, I think, three of the bargaining units are left, but the others had agreed to a 2% cost-of-living increase, which is interesting, because I had understood from a previous budget discussion that the expectation was 3%, so it would be useful to know which bargaining units are getting a lower or higher relative raise rate, which I think relates to questions that councilmember Watson had asked earlier. Also, councilmember Watson asked an interesting question that I think the city manager sort of wrote off, but I thought it was a very interesting question, which was, why doesn't the city give flat amounts of raises across the board rather than percent increases? When you give percent increases, it continues to exacerbate the difference between the people on the bottom of the pay scale and the people on the top of the pay scale, because every year, a percent raise benefits more the people on the top of the scale. Finally, I rarely disagree with Diane Wing. However, with regard to road conversions, as a bicyclist, I have to say that it makes my life a lot easier and hopefully also safer when I'm riding on roads, and I've actually taken to favoring roads that have bicycle conversions, and the result of that is that I actually end up favoring businesses that are closer to places where I can get to bicycle-converted lanes. One example would be that she's talking about, that section of Abbott between Lake Lansing Road and Saginaw. While it is true that the Northern Tier Trail picks up part of that north-to-south route, it does not pick up the whole thing. About half of that space is actually has no bike lanes, and the sidewalks are narrow and rather occupied by pedestrians. And it's difficult for me to get north and south on there as a bicyclist, and I know other bicyclists have the same problem. And that's a major trunk route for bicyclists coming from the northern tier in terms of housing down to East Lansing. So it does seem like a really important place to have bicycle lanes. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in nine five four, you are now permitted to address council.
I'm muted. I think you can hear me now, yes?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Nicole Viber over on Glen Chat Street. And I wanted to call in for, it looks like on your business agenda, resolutions, sort of an ordinance eliminating the use of coal tar-based sealants in East Lansing. And I wanted to come on and say that is very exciting, and I hope that that goes through. Any bit and every bit that we can just eliminate poison going into our shared lands and our shared waters is really, really necessary. And I'm glad to see it, you know, I feel like we've had decades, probably probably centuries to be more apt of, you know, letting the trust of a certain business or certain products sort of supersede the common good. So I'm really glad to see things seem to be shifting a little bit to where our local governments are stepping up to protect us and our common lands and waters. So I was really excited to see that. I encourage you all to go ahead and, you know, and let that be eliminated. It's good to see, you know, anywhere that that can occur. For example, I mentioned before, certainly to all of you, probably of the problem of roundup, products like that, pesticides herbicides. I know that we are a polymer-friendly community, so a lot of that isn't used anyways. But the more that's eliminated and just like a ban would be wonderful to see because there's other alternatives. And even if it takes a couple extra steps, it's certainly worth it to have drinkable water and to be able to know what we're gonna have in sacks and birds that are at the foundation of the life cycle. So, good to see that. I'm excited. I'm happy to see you all stepping forward on that. Kind of related also with the Arbor Day. I think that's a very nice thing to see. And I know, again, to mention Kathy, shout out to Kathy DeChavo. I know she focuses quite a bit on the sort of trees that feed the wildlife. So hopefully that'll be, you know, part of any ceremonies or plantings, taking that into consideration. And that's about it, except one. As I'm here in the Pine Crest neighborhood, it's exciting, you know, when we had the discussion of Dr. Green and that being, you know, maybe the name of the school. But then it was brought up as an idea like, well, why not a more high-profile building? So I don't know if you've thought about that, maybe renaming City Hall for Dr. Robert Green, but it's, you know, sort of like where a lot of the action and decision-making takes place and the intersection of, you know, citizenry and representative government. It seems like, you know, a possibility that might, like I said, be a more, be a more high-profile building. So just to kind of get that thought to you all, but yeah. Go for the ordinance to ban those sealants. I'd be very excited and congratulate you all as you, you know, kind of look at the reality of our ecological.
Thank you, Nicole. Emily, would you mind letting in the next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in eight eight nine, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, this is Lisa Miller here for Agenda Item three point eight. I pass.
Jessica Maury, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, I'm also here for Agenda Item three point eight, and I pass at this time.
Joe David, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, I'm here for Agenda Item five point two, and I pass.
Josh Minser, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, I'm here for Agenda Item three point eight, and I pass.
Kelly Allen, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, I'm here for Agenda F five point two with Joe David. I'm his counsel and I pass.
Thank you.
Those are all the callers we have on the line.
Great. Thank you very much, Emily. All right, on to our next item on the agenda, which is communication from the mayor and council members. I'll start with Councilmember Babcock.
Thank you. This is always a good sign, good opportunity to find out whether I've learned to unmute myself. I would like to really express thanks this week to Sparrow Hospital, particularly for its reuse of Sears. I am halfway through my COVID vaccination. I managed to whip through what I used to know as an oil change bay. Stick my arm out the window and get vaccinated, and it was just fantastic. Seeing the number of people who have been tested and/or vaccinated through that system has been great. I don't know who came up with the idea of using Sparrow Automotive, excuse me, the Sears Automotive base, but it was genius. And so I'd like to thank you. I'd also like to thank the Commission on the Environment for its work on the ban of tar sealants that we will be taking up tonight. A lot of work went into that, especially a neat husband and wife team, Kristi Allen and Kristi Alwyn, talking too fast, and Tom Alwyn, who is somewhat known as her husband and somewhat known as the Chair of the Commission on the Environment. So it's amazing the depth of knowledge we have in East Lansing. With that, I'll sign off. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Watson.
Can you come back to me?
Yep, not a problem. Councilmember Bacon.
Just coming out of the, out of the budget session, I just want to once again reiterate and thank staff and everyone for the effort that went into this budget document. I've been a part of many, many, many budgets, and this is like the, one of the most extensive and best and easy to understand budgets I've ever seen put together. First time for a municipality, but it's beautifully done and wonderfully done. I just want to thank everyone for taking the time and thoroughness to get this thing put into a form that's comprehensive and that can be comprehended simultaneously, which is really difficult to do. So I just want to thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Mayor Proton.
Hey, echoing Councilmember Babcock's comments about her vaccine process, I had a similar experience out at MSU Pavilion with the Ingham County Health Team and the National Guard operating an extremely tight ship. I was very impressed. I also super want a high-vis vest with the words vaccinator on the back because I think that would be like the most awesome superhero costume ever. But I will be fully vaccinated as of this Friday. I'm pretty excited to join, join the ranks of the immune. But also simultaneously pretty dismayed to see our numbers exploding in town. I think it's pretty clear that we've got a strong case of quarantine fatigue and that with the good news on the horizon for the vaccines that there's a decent number of people who have decided that they don't have to observe a fair level of caution. So even though I'm going to be one of the immune as of two weeks after Friday, I will still be wearing my mask. I will still be distancing. I'll be, you know, cautious about being in closed spaces with large numbers of other people. We really just have to keep on being cautious so that we can get through this last, hopefully this is the last big hump to get over on our graph of case count climbing. Hopefully this is the mountain and that we're, we'll be down the other side shortly, but until then, we all do still need to look out for each other. So I guess that's my rosy, but not so rosy view, which I guess is kind of how I'm feeling about our budget as well. I think, you know, we are, it was occurring to me of all the people that we were thinking through the budget process who are certainly do high levels of praise. I think our staff is again, outdone themselves in terms of a beautiful document. But it also just occurs to me that we would be in such a more devastating position if we had not passed our income tax. And so I would like to express my personal appreciation for the voters who voted for that to make my, my job significantly easier here in this chair. So you know, I think we do have a strong community. We look out for each other, support each other. And, you know, I appreciate being, being part of this body to direct that. So yep, head down, power through. I think we can, we can get through it, you guys.
Councilmember Watson.
Okay, I have three things. I think this weekend is the free leaf pickup. Is that correct? So just a reminder. Is that right? Yes, thank you. Free leaf pickup. So just a reminder, if you want to get outside and do your yards, that you get your leaves picked up for free this weekend. The next thing I wanted to mention is the weather's getting nicer and some of us are starting to hear more motorcycles. I am doing my best to understand why from all sorts of angles, but if you are having problems and you're hearing the motorcyclists, you can always let the police know, you can let me know, you can let city council know. And we're working on all sorts of angles to try to get this figured out. People have babies, people want to sleep at night, and like for me, on my busy street on Hagedorn, it's very disruptive and there's speeding going on too. You're supposed to just go thirty miles per hour. The last comment I wanted to make is I just wanted to say thank you to the study committee. I see you all, I hear you all, and I appreciate the conversations that you have. When we got the results of the survey, I didn't understand at that time that that was the time for me to specifically say I wanted certain parts deleted out of that draft that was shown to us. And I have heard other people bring up that part of it. And I also know that that survey was presented in two different ways. One was more data on what's going on in our city. Because as some people say, people want to see this as just this great city, but we've got stuff going on for folks. But also comparables going forward. And so it's important that we pay attention to the feedback that we're given about the survey and what's gone on with it for now and for going forward as well. And just again, to the study committee, thank you so much for your work and the input. And I'm listening and I'm thinking and it's time, it's time for us to make some good changes for black and brown people who come here and who live here.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Watson. All right. I will, I have a couple of things, something that I said earlier in our budget work session, but today is the first day of Ramadan. And so Ramadan, Mubarak, happy Ramadan to those who are celebrating this month. As well, I share some of the similar statements from Councilmember Bacon along our budget. It is gonna be a long process, but one that's very, very important. And, you know, I think we're gonna learn a lot throughout, and I'm really, really happy to be working with this council to look at our budget through a number of different lenses, but certainly one that has dealt with a very significantly different year, let's say, than, than previous years. And we're in a lot better position than I think we imagined we would be last year. So I'm very, very happy with that result. As we go forward, I did want to note that there is an item on our consent agenda in regards to water shut-offs. And I don't know whether that was a council-driven initiative or was a staff-driven initiative, but either way, I think it's great. I think that this is something that, you know, we've heard from individuals, certainly throughout our community, that are still experiencing financial hardships. And I just wanted to note who, I mean, I don't, I don't really know who was the one that really initiated that, but it's great. I'm really happy to see that as a priority for the city going forward. So thank you for that. And then the last thing is, I'm gonna make a motion to go into closed session at the end of this meeting to pursuant to Section eight C of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. Again, stating that this would can, or this would occur at the conclusion of this meeting. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Bacon. Will the clerk please call the roll on this item?
Councilmember Babcock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bacon?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Greg?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes. Great. Seeing as that passed unanimously, at the end of this meeting, we will go into closed session. Great. I'm on to the city manager's report, two point four. George?
Mayor, just have one comment, and that is to notify council that we have a little bit of an unfortunate loss temporarily to our staff. Our own Scott House will be called up and doing military service. I think council knows that Scott House serves as a Colonel in the US Army. And he's had two tours of duty in Iraq, so he's had very significant service aside from his public service career. But he will be on a stateside assignment likely for a year or more. This is something that we knew when we hired him, that he has this commitment potentially out there to the US Army. And of course, we accept it and support it. So it's a loss to us for the duration. We have a very capable group of department directors or assistant directors behind Scott to fill in. Still a loss for us, but I wanted to let council know that. So when you hear about that, that should happen in mid-June. And we would expect to have him elsewhere in service to the country for a year or more. And then, of course, coming back to us beyond that point. So I wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Mr. House, as always, and certainly unfortunate on our end, but but I wish you nothing but the best, certainly, as we go forward. So if you're here, thank you for everything that you do for us. And certainly thank you for everything that you do for our country.
He is here and he'll be available for another agenda item, so.
Great. All right, moving on to our city attorney's report, Mr. Homer.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I only have one item to report, and you may have already heard that the governor extended Myosha's emergency rules relative to workplace settings. Most notably, that means that if it's feasible for employees to work remotely, then they must be given the opportunity to do so. So they're the same rules that were originally passed back in October of twenty twenty. And so those workplace rules now are in effect until October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Yep.
Great. On to our next item, which is the consent agenda, and I will hand this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the following items on the consent agenda for council's consideration. Item three point one, approve a parking agreement with Michigan Flyer Bus Service and authorize the city manager to sign. Three point two, approve a resolution establishing a public hearing on the preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and property tax rate for May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Three point three, approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a Michigan Department of Transportation M dot trunk line maintenance
3.3, approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a Michigan Department of Transportation M dot trunk line maintenance contract. Item 3.4, approve a resolution to execute the cost sharing agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation M dot for utility improvements, resurfacing and the, and addition of bike lanes on Abbott Road between Saginaw Street and Lake Lansing Road. Item 3.5, approve a consultant services contract to Landscape Architects and Planners Incorporated in the amount of $34,282 for design services associated with the patriarch park hard surface sport court upgrades and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.6, approve a resolution proclaiming April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the city of East Lansing. Item 3.7, approve a resolution recognizing April 24th, 2021 as Armenian Genocide Day in the city of East Lansing. Item 3.8, set a public hearing for May 11th, 2021 to consider a special use permit application from Collegiate Catering East Lansing LLC for the property at 133 Evergreen Avenue to allow the restaurant to serve alcoholic beverages. Item 3.9, set the public, set the first public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Budget for April 27th, 2021. 3.10, set up second public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program Budget for May 11th, 2021. 3.11, introduce and set for the April 27th, 2021 Business Agenda Ordinance Number 1499 in ordinance prohibiting residential water shut offs. Those are all the items on the consent agenda for council's consideration.
Great. Are there any items that, uh, members of council would like to move to the business agenda? Yeah, Councilmember Babcock.
Yes, I would like to move item 3.4 for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that item has been moved to our business agenda and we could have it listed as 5.3 now.
Thanks.
Great. Any other items? Great. Um, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read, um, without item 3.4. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Babcock. I have, uh, one amendment, uh, that I would like to make, um, on item. Sorry, on item 3.7, um, just the actual title of that, although in the resolution it does state this correctly. And the title of this, I, I'd make a motion to amend, uh, that, that title to say approve a resolution recognizing April 24th, 2021 as Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day, um, in the city of East Lansing. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Babcock. Um, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great. Um, and then I'd like to make a disclosure, uh, that I'm gonna make today and then I'm not gonna, uh, probably make it in the future regarding item 3.2. I have a romantic relationship, uh, with somebody that works in our 54B District Court, um, that does have a relation to our overall budget. Um, that relationship is pre-existing to myself serving on council, um, that I do write on my disclosure forms, but I did want to make that note uh, here today, just to be, uh, as transparent as I possibly can. Um, but that'll serve as, as my disclosure of that information, um, going forward and our, during our budget process. Great. Any more discussion on the consent agenda? As amended? Go ahead, Councilmember Babcock.
Do we ever get to meet this fabulous person?
I, yeah, I, I don't know. She, she is pretty great.
I've heard great things about her. Okay.
She is pretty great.
Back to business, sorry.
Yep. Um, all right. Any more discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great. That passes as amended. Uh, we are on to our next item, which is public hearings. Uh, the first public hearing is, uh, for a substantial amendment to the program here, 2019 Action Plan Document and consideration of the city of East Lansing Community Development Block Grants, uh, funding. I will hand this over to Amy and then we will open it up to a public hearing or anybody that wishes to speak on the subject.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. Um, I believe that we're gonna, uh, bring up a quick PowerPoint presentation.
Great.
Thank you, Nicole. So this evening, um, we are here to consider a substantial amendment to the 2019 Action Plan Document. Um, this essentially details the city's acceptance and possible allocation of CDBG coronavirus or CDVG CV funds. Um, if you could turn to the next slide, that would be great. As just a bit of history for everyone, last May, um, the East Lansing City Council approved the first round of CDBG CV funds. And through that allocation, I asked that staff develop and implement two specific programs. The first was an emergency rent and mortgage relief program. Um, this program is currently operating and it is a program by which, uh, East Lansing residents can apply to receive up to $5,000 in rent or mortgage assistance. Um, I would like to point out that it is the only opportunity currently where residents can receive mortgage assistance in all of Inham County. So that is, um, unique for this particular type of programming. Um, it has been quite successful to date. Thirty-five households have been served of the total allocated budget of $121,820. $88,804 has been expended to date, um, leaving a remaining balance of a little more than $33,000 that can be expended through September 30th, 2022. The second program that we're currently operating with our CDBG CV funding is the Small Business Grant Relief Program. Uh, this is a program by which businesses can apply to receive up to $10,000 in grant funds for businesses that were agreed to retain income eligible employees. Um, those funds can be allocated towards, um, rent and mortgage support as well as, um, utilities assistance and payroll support. Currently, we've had 13 businesses that have been awarded grants to date, um, of a total budget of $167,000. A little more than $113,000 has been reserved through grants that have been approved, um, leading, leaving a remaining balance of a little more than $53,000. We could go to the next slide. So through this, uh, proposed substantial amendment this evening, um, and as we discussed in the most recent, um, March 16th meeting, um, previously, the city is eligible to receive CDBG round three funds. Now, this is actually the second pot of money through CV funds the city is receiving, but technically from the federal government labeling perspective, it's called round three funds. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone. Um, and through the pro and per the HUD guidelines, um, we accept those funds through a substantial amendment through our 2019 Action Plan Document. And so really the main purpose of, um, our discussion this evening is to, um, ideally make a recommendation and approve funding for the CV funds. Um, as you may recall, in the last discussion that we had, council, um, felt pretty strongly that, uh, through, um, um, the successes of the rent and mortgage program that we, uh, potentially extend it to utilities relief as well. And so before you and within your, uh, packet materials, you have a proposed rent, mortgage and utilities relief program. I'd like to point out that through this program, persons could receive rent, mortgage and/or utilities assistance. So they are not required to receive rent and mortgage assistance in order to receive utilities assistance. They can do one or both, um, just to clarify that. Um, the one change that I wanted to point out is that this evening, we would recommend up to $7,000 total towards rent and mortgage assistance. Since we, uh, made the substantial limit document public of $5,000, we've had further consultation with experts in the field and with Capital Area Housing Partnership. And when you sort of consider the overall, um, or general, um, monthly mortgage in East Lansing, $7,000 would really, um, just provide additional financial assistance and, and hopefully, you know, just fulfill a greater financial gap for housing for the full six months. So that is the current recommendation before you this evening. So individuals could receive a total cap of up to $7,000 for rent and mortgage assistance for up to six months. Or, um, and in addition to $3,000 in utility assistance or six months. Um, each household would receive no more than $10,000. And so really we're kind of also trying to equate that to our business support program. So $10,000 is sort of available in, in both types of programming. Um, next slide, please. Uh, through the proposed recommendation, um, if this were to move forward through the Emergency Rent Mortgage Utilities Program, Capital Area Housing Partnership would administer the program. Um, it would be, um, on a first come, first served basis. So individuals would apply to receive the funds. They would fill out an application. Um, they would provide proof of, um, outstanding bills that needed to be paid. Um, Capital Era's Theory Housing Partnership would then, um, confirm any arrearsages and, um, apply, um, you know, to the city for approval to expend the funds. So the motion for possible consideration at the close of the public hearing is, um, as follows, as updated by staff, um, the possible consideration of the approval of the city of East Lansing Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Three or CDBG Fuzzit Funds as a substantial amendment to the 2019 Action Plan Document. And I'm happy to answer any questions council might have now, um, or obviously at the end of the public hearing.
Um, let's open it up for a public hearing and then, uh, we can get back to council member questions. Thank you, Amy. For those that have called in, uh, if you do not wish to speak on this subject specifically, you can simply say pass, although we will be calling on everybody's number that is here right now. Um, so if we hit you again, I, I do apologize, even if you said, um, what item you're here for, um, just because that, that's kind of our process for public hearings. It's kind of what we gotta do. So, Emily.
Caller with the phone number ending in 240, you are now permitted to address council.
Pass.
Caller with the phone number ending in 386, you are now permitted to address council.
Pass.
Caller with the phone number ending in 963, you are now permitted to address council.
This is Alice Digger. This seems like a good program, but I'm somewhat concerned that I can't tell from the description how much of the fund is going to go to Capital Area Housing Partnership for, um, administering the program. It's possible maybe they're not being paid anything out of this program because they have other funding by which to administer it, but it seems like we should be able to know that. And in the past, when I've asked Raleigh to answer questions, he doesn't answer them. So I was hoping that you could, um, give us an answer on that. Additionally, I'm somewhat concerned with regard to how these programs get advertised. And the reason I say that is because when I looked into the E-HOP program, what I found was that for the last few years, the only people using the E-HOP program were either people in the planning department or people associated with the city manager's, um, office, which suggests to me that it's possible that not enough people are actually being advised that these programs exist. And so I would urge you to figure out how exactly Capital Area Housing is going to do advertising of this program so that we're sure we're reaching people equitably. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, would you mind going to the next caller?
Joe David, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, I'm still here just for the agenda 5.2 and I will pass.
Thank you, sir.
Josh Minzer, you are now permitted to address council.
Yes, I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Allen, you are now permitted to address council.
Pass.
Those are all the, uh, callers we have on the line.
Great, thank you very much. Um, all right, um, now I'll open it up for questions from council. Um, please feel free to chime in. Amy, I, I do have a, I do have a kind of a question for you in regards to, um, you know, the past due, uh, threshold. Um, you know, have you, have you encountered situations or is Capital Housing Partnership encountered situations where, you know, somebody might be uh, anticipating a loss of, uh, ability or financial ability to, to pay in the future, or would, would they qualify or do you actually need to have those, those past due statements? And that can affect somebody's credit and other things that, that would have kind of a long-term effect. So can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Certainly. So HUD, HUD requires that the applicant select a six-month period and it has to be a consecutive six months. So for example, if the applicant comes in, right, and says, let's pretend that I applied today and I said that I assume I'm going to have my six months, then I can, you know, select perhaps January to June. Um, but I have to stick within those six months and I can only apply once currently through the program requirements. So what we have primarily, in fact, I think what we have mostly been doing or have formally been doing is arrearsages. Um, there are some other programs out there. Um, there is a state program that actually recently launched a couple of weeks ago called the SARA program where individuals uh, could, as you're suggesting, Mayor, potentially get some credit forward. Um, but per HUD requirements, because HUD requirements are that we need to stick to six months and generally they want, you know, paperwork documentation line is, is usually easier to do arrearsages.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that makes sense logistically. It just, it just does affect people in a, in a negative way overall. And you, you have to imagine that, you know, folks that are, are gonna be kind of held to that for, for a long time, unfortunately. So.
Yes, and what, um, you know, what we, what we, in, in regards to mortgages, um, what CAHP has also seen is that some mortgage lenders are allowing individuals to essentially take an extended mortgage, mortgage. So for example, if, if I'm unable to pay my mortgage for a year, I assume that perhaps instead of having a 30-year mortgage, I might have a 31-year mortgage. Um, but there are certainly fines associated with that. So the hope here certainly through this program is that, you know, we could help to address some of that. Um, you know, and that some of that could be, could be paid. So those, those are the things that we have seen since the launch of the program.
All right, that makes sense. And then, uh, would you mind answering the question, uh, is Capital Area Housing Partnership, uh, being paid out of this fund for administrative costs?
They are.
Okay. Can we get those numbers at some point?
Yes, you can. Yes.
Thanks. Uh, any other questions from council members? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion on this. That, by the way, is very elegantly put on page two.
All right, I'm sorry. I do, I do have a question.
Yeah, no, 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 don't apologize for having.
So just to the caller's point too about advertising, is there a plan for how we're gonna try to make sure that outreach happens in an equitable way?
Yes. So after consultation, um, with Capital Area Housing Partnership, they have actually created a mailer, um, that would go out throughout the entire East Lansing community. Um, my understanding is that, um, because this program is, uh, geared specifically towards, uh, you know, or are very available to mortgages, um, you know, it will, there will be, uh, there will be some emphasis placed on, on homeowners, but it is not going to preclude renters either. So I just want to kind of make that known. But there is a mailer that I would be happy to send to council, um, before it is sent out that would go citywide. Um, and that we can certainly then share on our social media platforms. The Capital Area Housing Partnership would share on its social media platforms. And frankly, you know, based on kind of, um, the response that we've received with our current program, we, we believe that these funds will be expended quickly. So.
So he, here's my other pitch to you, um, Amy, in regards to Councilmember Watson's point. I guess while I understand that the qualifications might be get a little bit of an easier time for mortgagegoers, it's really important that folks, obviously, that are renting in our community are also, you know, uh, made aware of this kind of program. Um, so if there could be some direct communication, especially to our local landlords in the area, uh, to try and facilitate that kind of communication, if they do have individuals that may be behind on rent payments, that this is an option. I think that would be good as well. It's probably something that's already happening, but it certainly, you know, makes sense to kind of go where, uh, the, the, you know, the notice would have been written from. So I think that that's, that's probably important. Go ahead, Charles.
We can do also something in the utility billing because we build water and sewer, so we can notify people that way as well. An insert in the mail in the bill about this program.
Yeah, didn't we have a conversation? I think it was Councilmember Watson that brought up just actually putting that right on the, on the bills that go out.
I think we can do an insert into the bill. I don't know if, and into the envelope, but I don't know if we can put on the thing, but I can check either way.
Yeah, that makes sense. Go ahead, Councilmember Babcock. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Watson. If I interrupted you, please feel free to finish. Then Councilmember Babcock.
Um, just one, I think one more thing for now. Um, it still seems like the students are left out. So like if a student is responsible for a utility bill and they're struggling, it still seems like they might not be able to qualify.
So it's, yeah, it, it's really. So it's, yeah, it, it's really based upon the requirements set by HUD. And I'm really not trying to usurp the question, but what we really find is that as the applicant comes in, you know, that's, that's the area in which we can kind of income back better. So to your point, council member, if it is a situation where there are, you know, five individuals living in one apartment, we would have to, and there's one lease, right? Not five leases, one lease. We are going to have to income back everyone living in that particular apartment is just an example. But there are sometimes, you know, based upon eligibility and, and how the student is counted on parents' taxes, there, we have serviced some students. I can, I can share that. The percentage I don't have for you specifically, but we have been able to, to, to service some, some, some students. But I, I take that point. And unfortunately, we're just bound by the HUD, but that, that is a HUD regulatory issue that we are facing, not something within our own bounds of, of program requirements.
In my list, I just, one more comment, just final comment. I'm just checking out the race and ethnicity and I just think it's interesting because Asian is listed as a race as well as white. And it makes me think about also including Arab. But I just think it's interesting how the race and ethnicity is how the boxes are for this application. This comment.
Very much.
Absolutely. Yep. And I, you know, I do want to point out again, I know I mentioned it a couple of minutes ago, but there is the SARAH Program. It is a COVID Emergency Relief Response Program that's been, you know, launched by the state of Michigan. And so we are going to obviously direct people to that program as well through our social media site. But we're really hoping that our funds between our funds and the state of Michigan funds that, you know, individuals, students in particular, that, that hopefully between the two sets of funds that we're going to be able to really provide significant outreach and funding to lots of people throughout our East Lansing community. So I did just want to kind of point that out to everyone.
Councilmember Babcock and then Councilmember Bacon, go ahead.
Pass. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bacon.
Amy, is there any type of like preclearance if someone's got questions like around those leasing situations and that where they could ask those questions prior to fully engaging the process, just so they know, like, hey, it doesn't fit my scenario or things like that? What would that look like?
Certainly. So we have, in the packet materials, we do have like a general FAQ sheet. We post that and we direct link to that off of our webpage and Capital Area Housing Partnership has that. I would also encourage people to just call Capital Area Housing Partnership. It's five one seven three three two four six six three. Again, five one seven three three two four six six three. And I would really encourage them to just call. They, I know that there are two staff members that are specifically working on this program and about five or six that are working on the, on the Mishra program. And so I would really encourage them to just have a quick conversation with those individuals. And, you know, before they fill out any documentation, to your point, you know, just, just kind of talk through this scenario. And hopefully, you know, that would give them sort of peace of mind of knowing, oh, I'm not gonna, you know, waste my time or waste my hour, you know, before I fill out this, this, these applications.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, again, feel free to make a motion on the item. If there is one. Go ahead, Councilmember Babcock.
Thank you. Actually, I'm not sure exactly what I'm going to move here. I've lost my script.
All good. You know what? I will make a motion to approve the City of East Lansing Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Three, CDBG CV Budget Funds as a substantial amendment to the 2019 Action Plan. Is there a second on that?
I will happily second. Thank you.
Great. Any more discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Great. All right, we are on to our next item, which is a public hearing for a substantial amendment to the program, Year 2020 Action Plan Document. And I believe this is Amy as well.
This is. Thank you very much for having me this evening again. So I did just want to share that, you know, initially we had scheduled and requested this public hearing from a staff perspective to really allow for flexibility of any and all possible funding opportunities. And as I mentioned before, you know, after further research and through the recommendation, we determined that through the allocation of CDBG CV funds, that should really hopefully go towards rent, mortgage and utility support, which was just approved a moment ago. And we certainly thank you for that. So based on all of that initial research, you know, we've really, at this point, we are not recommending any changes to the program year 2020 Action Plan Document. I think it's important to point out that, you know, the one element that was had during, through both the CV funds and the entitlement funds is that there is still a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that can still go towards business support. So, you know, businesses can still apply to receive grant funds and we felt that, you know, that that was an appropriate amount. Given the fact that, you know, we've also allocated over a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to that program as well. So it's really just, you know, frankly, kind of a balancing act and, and trying to determine where we thought that the funds would be best utilized and what might be of, of good emergent use. And so at this time, we are not recommending any particular action item. However, because this was publicly noticed, because it was placed in the newspaper and formally set by council, I would recommend that certainly we hold the public hearing and then I could answer any final questions by council.
Great. All right. So it shall be. Unless there's any outstanding questions for members of council, I will open up the public hearing. I'm sorry, Amy, did you, did you actually have that number for the Capital Area Housing Operation Cost available to you right now? Again, I'm, I'm happy with an email follow-up later, but.
Certainly. So the last discussion that I had with them, but it was, it was not for the full detailed amounts. We've increased the budget from the last time. They were, they were going to take about ten percent of the total budget, so that was about twenty-one thousand dollars towards the admin. I will need to confirm that because we now are allocating more, you know, in total operating. But that was the last discussion. It was less, it was less than ten percent of the total budget.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any other outstanding questions for councilmembers before I open this up? All right, I will open it up to the public hearing. Please feel free. Emily.
Caller with the phone number ending in three eight six, you are now permitted to address council.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in nine six three, you are now permitted to address council.
Pass.
Joe David, you are now permitted to address council.
Pass.
Josh Minzer, you are now permitted to address council.
Pass. Thank you.
Kelly Allen, you are now permitted to address council.
Pass.
Those are all the callers we have on the line.
Thank you very much, Emily. And, and thanks for those that were sticking around. I know you guys are here for a different item, but I appreciate you participating in our public hearing. It's just one word. Great. Amy, did you have anything else for us on this item?
I do not, Mayor.
All right, awesome. Anybody have anything else? Any other following up questions? Great. I will move on to our business agenda. First is item five point one, Consideration of a Policy Resolution 2020 dash twelve and Ordinance Number fourteen ninety-eight. And this will be, sorry, I'm pulling it up, Kathy DeChambeau and Mr. House. How are you today?
Good, good evening. Well, thank you for the kind words earlier. I'm going to be filling in for Mr. DeChambeau tonight. So starting off here, as you'll recall, this was brought before council previously, and this is coming back to council about a year after the fact. Going back to the history of this, we look at this, this was an initiative from the Commission on the Environment that started in two thousand twenty. The goal was to align this proposed ordinance and resolution with neighboring jurisdictions to make it easier to, for contractors. City staff and the Commission on Environment worked with the city clerk's office and the building department to ensure that this would be a feasible and enforceable ordinance as written. And also, so you might, you had questions last time regarding what's going on regionally. Well, good news there is that this came up last night at the Grand Ledge City Council Meeting and also the Greater Lansing Regional Coordination Committee for Stormwater, coordinated by the Tri-County Regional Planning Commissions, working at establishing a regional-wide ordinance based on this model. So it's good news that we're leading the way there. And by the way, Nicole McPherson is the chair of that work group. And Cliff Walls, who's a member of the C- Commission on the Environment, is an environmental planner for Tri-County. But as we know here, the purpose of this ordinance and resolution is to prevent the polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, also known as pHs, from entering our local watersheds and causing unnecessary harm. So from here, I hand it over to you for any questions you might have.
Great. Who knew that having Nicole in that chair position would be so great? No. Anyway, any other questions? Lisa, go ahead. Councilmember Babcock, sorry, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I didn't have a question.
All right, all good. Any other members of council have any other questions? We've talked about this a bunch and I, I do appreciate the work that went into this, certainly from the Commission on the Environment, but also the resource that is Kathy DeChambeau and how, how much she knows. It was, it was very nice. And actually, that's really good to hear. The Tri-County Planning Commission Subcommittee is taking that up as well at a conversation with the Chair of the Inum County Board of Commissioners as well about trying to make this a county-wide situation. And if it needs to go through Tri-County Planning, that, that works too. Certainly, it's great that East Lansing is doing this. Certainly, it is great that Meridian Township already passed something like this. But having something region-wide, I think, is, is probably the best approach going forward that'll have the most impact. So I'm really, really glad to hear that that's happening. And anything that you need from us to support, please let us know. Because I'm certain that this council would be on board with that. Great. If there's no other comments or questions, I will look for a motion on these items. Go ahead, Councilmember Babcock.
I move that we approve the resolution to ban coal tar sealants in the City of East Lansing.
I believe the motion would have to be the policy resolution and the ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. House? Or Mr. Homer?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay. Lisa, would you take, I'll second that, but would you take a friendly amendment to? Actually, would, would you like to maybe withdraw your motion and make a new one?
Sure. I withdraw that motion.
Life isn't about not making mistakes. It's about how you recover. And I propose, I move that the City of East, I move that the City Council pass resolution and ordinance banning coal tar sealants in the City of East Lansing.
Great. And that would be Policy Resolution twenty twenty dash twelve as well as Ordinance Number fourteen ninety-eight, correct?
Yes.
Great. I'll second that. All right, any discussion? All right. A lot of great work went into this. Happy to see it passed. Thanks. And thank you, Mr. House. It's good to see you. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I'm, I'm gonna say that one more time. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Great. And I believe we may have lost Councilmember Bacon. Or he is just not showing up on my screen, so I, I do hope he finds his way back. But if anything, actually, Mr. Homer, does that affect anything if we didn't have one individual vote on this?
Uh, no, it would just be reflective of five yays and one that did not vote. I see Councilmember Bacon on my screen, but he's muted and his camera's off.
Okay, well, then I will move on from this item as long as that has the sufficient amount of votes to have passed. Is that correct?
We're all good. Correct. Yep, we're good.
Okay. All right. Well, then I will move on to item five point two, Consideration of Request from Two Fourteen Group LLC, Liquor and Entertainment License at One O One. This is Adam Cummins.
Yeah, hello. Good evening. So before I summarize this request, I would just like to point out that staff are currently evaluating the policies and processes that are associated with, you know, the city's liquor and entertainment license. And we'll be proposing changes to the council to consider in the near future. We, through this process, we identified some room for improvement, if you will. And so stay tuned for that in the near future. To get to the request though, the, you know, the request you have in front of you tonight is from Two One Four Group LLC, the new owners of Land Shark for a city liquor and entertainment license at One O One East Grand River Avenue. I'd like to note that this request is heard by the Downtown Development Authority on March twenty-fifth, where the board voted unanimously to recommend approval. The Michigan Liquor License, Liquor Control Commission does not require city approval because this is a transfer of ownership of the state liquor license issued for Land Shark. City code requires a special use permit for restaurants pursuing a liquor license. However, Land Shark is one of six establishments in the city that are not subject to a special use permit because they were in operation prior to these rules being adopted and are not proposing any fiscal changes nor an increase in occupancy. So stat, through our evaluation of the application, we, staff has determined that Two One Four Group LLC's liquor and entertainment license application is complete and complies with city requirements and see no circumstances that would warrant denial of a new license. Therefore, staff recommend that council consider approval of the city liquor license and city entertainment license. And with that, we have represent, represent, ah, representatives from new ownership on the call and available to answer questions.
Does council members have questions for either staff or the representatives that have made themselves available on this call for this item? Gone once, gone twice? All right. Thank you, Mr. Cummins. I appreciate the explanation and thank you to the folks that were here and stuck with us for, actually not that long of a meeting, but still probably a little bit more into the day than they expected. So if there are no questions or discussion on this item, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move approval, but the battery died on my tablet that I'm using to stream the agenda. So I don't have the exact wording of of the motion that I'm supposed to move. So if, if somebody could insert that for me, that would be great.
I gotta start holding you guys to a higher standard on the motions, man.
All right, man. We'll practice.
Just kidding. Yeah, go ahead.
Consideration of Policy Resolution twenty twenty dash twelve and Ordinance Number fourteen ninety-eight. Is that right?
Councilmember Bacon, we're on the, we're on the next item.
Oh, I went to the bathroom.
Ah, that, that explains the brief absence there. Yeah, so we are on the next item.
All right. Darn it, you guys.
It's the two meetings in a row thing, you guys, like.
Yeah.
The brain cells are used up. Sorry.
We're gone. Sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the request from Two One Four Group LLC for a city liquor license and entertainment license at One O One East Grand River Avenue, known as the Land Shark. Is there a second on that?
I have a second.
All right.
Yeah, I'm not gonna hog the seconds.
I, I'm gonna say seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any more discussion? Mr. Cummins, just please do keep a surprise. I, I am interested in that, in that policy overall. It is an older policy. I want to know whether it really aligns up with where the state is on it. And if we do need to make changes on that, I don't actually really know what the process for that would be. Would that be like a planning commission, DDA? Would that be something that's on council discussion only? What, what's the, what's the process for that?
Well, we, we could certainly take it to discussion only. When we can fit, complete our evaluation of the process and the procedures and make, you know, prepare recommendations, we can certainly bring it back to council.
Yeah, honestly, I'm not necessarily suggesting we, like, what the proper process to go about it is. Just whenever we have more information, just keep a surprise. Just whenever we have more information, just keep a surprise. Yeah. All right, great. All right, any other comments on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Great. We are on to our next item, which is 5.3, which is formerly Item 3.4, Approval of a Resolution to Execute Cost Sharing Agreement with MDOT for Utility Improvements and our wonderful Bike Lane Discussion on Abbott Road. And I can hand this over to Mr. House, although I will note that Councilmember Babcock requested this item off the agenda, so Councilmember Babcock, if you had something you specifically wanted staff to address, I'm gonna open the floor to you first. If, if not, I can, I can let staff give a general overview, but I wanted to make sure.
A general overview would be great. Thank you.
Great. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
All right, good evening again. So this is part of our federal aid projects where we receive Tri-County or federal funding through Tri-County to make road improvements. So this has been on our transportation improvement plan since, for many years now. And what this does is it merges bike lanes, and so it gives us two funding sources. And that's not, we don't, we don't pursue two funding sources because it's cheaper or better. We do it because it makes sense here. The addition of bike lanes here was studied by our consultant, DLZ, that was brought, the study was brought before the Transportation Commission. What the study basically found was, yes, this is feasible. It would improve service to side streets. It would make the level of service for many of them their F and E, like the, the higher the number, the letter in the alphabet and traffic studies, the worse it is. And, but it would, it would improve access for those side streets. And also, it would might slow traffic down a little bit as well. And it would allow bike lanes as well, expanding transportation options. And we look at four to three conversions. I know there's, there's mixed feelings on that, and it's understandable. But the fact of the matter is that a four to three conversion is safer. And we look at, East Lansing was a leader with that, and the southern portion of Abbott Road, when we look at from Bercham to Saginaw, saw 40% reduction in accidents. And we look at this section of road during this study, it found that the primary accident cause was rear end collisions. And the four to three conversion prevents that because the worst thing that happens in traffic is I have two lanes of traffic, excuse me, flying down the street, and someone stops in the middle and wants to turn left, and everyone else piles up there and hits them. In a four to three conversion, you go to the middle, and people know that you're there to turn. So it gives you, it gives spaces for where you can slow down and where to turn and not to turn. With this study, though, and in this plan, we are keeping intersections whole. There will be all the stacking lanes that there currently are to accommodate the access to Saginaw and Lake Lansing. And we look at this, this is from staff perspective, as supported by our consultants and from the Transportation Commission, this is a worthwhile investment that would expand, make traffic safer and would also expand access to more, more, more users of the road as well. Subject, subject to your questions.
Any questions for members of council? And I'll just note, it's a good thing we have experts on our staff. They can, they can say it a lot better than I can, but I mean, in general, especially on this, and we discussed this a number of months ago, and I, I want to say, you know, the, the week that we discussed it, you know, I myself almost got into an accident on that road because somebody was turning left. And they didn't indicate on their, their blinker in a really, I think, given enough appropriate time, and then just kind of made an abrupt stop in what was a lane that, that, you know, was used for regular traffic. And in that situation, of course, they were in the right to do so. They, they have to turn left, so they, you know, were doing that, but, you know, it, it opens an opportunity for, yeah, as you said, more rear-ending crashes. And so I think that makes sense. I also just think that access and safety for different modes of transportation is important as well. And we certainly have seen, I think, more carefulness as we, as we go on in areas where we've done this in the past. So any other questions?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I generally. Is that okay? Can I?
Yeah, no, no, just go.
All right, mayhem. But anyway, my comment, I am pretty much wildly in favor of bike lanes wherever we can put them. I think we've got a very aggressive, non-motorized plan that I would, you know, aggressive in the language that we support it, but I think maybe not as aggressive in the policies that back it up. So I'd like to, you know, kind of move that forward so that we're really actually putting our, our policies where our strategic priorities say they should be. I live right off of Harrison, and I have actually really appreciated the traffic flow change from three to two. I have one comment, and I know that this is complicated because the Saginaw's a trunk line and MDOT trunk line. But when we're doing this, I don't know if there's a way that we can petition for a signal change on those intersections so that we can get a dedicated turn light. We already actually have it on Abbott, so that's not going to be a problem, but both on Coolidge and on Harrison, the only times I ever see a traffic backup is during the morning commute hours. And then people back up in the turn lane because there's no signal. And so we only get one car through on every signal light. So I, I know that that's complicated because we have to go to MDOT and that it's not easy to do a, you know, a full signal change on those things. But I really do actually think that that is an important thing to try to do. So nothing in, nothing in regard to this signal on Abbott because that turn signal already exists there, but on the other two where we've done road diets. Actually, I think Coolidge is next, right? We haven't done it yet, but it's, I don't know, anyway. So that was just my comment, so.
So great timing because we just met with MDOT. We meet with them pretty much once a quarter and talk issues. They're going to be coming before the Transportation Commission in the coming months, so we'll bring that up to them. They're great partners in this area, and MDOT has a lot of good news because finally they have money to tell us how they're fixing the roads versus why they can't fix the roads. So turning.
Let me know if there's anything I can do to lend whatever weight my opinion has when that comes forward. I would be happy to speak on behalf of dedicated left turn signals.
We'll definitely invite you to that meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Bacon, and then Councilmember Babcock.
Yeah, just to speak to the caller's concerns, I think they're, they're legitimate. But also, I take that route so often, and it's kind of the route for the high school as well, just tons of inexperienced drivers. Anyway, any extra ways that clarify, you know, the, the turning lanes and, and the bike lanes, and many kids take that route with their bikes and everything else to school. So I think that alone alleviates a lot. It's probably one where the most inexperienced drivers spend a great deal of their time in the city. Definitely, I know my high school guys and girls do, so there's the challenge right there. So I think it's a great, great for that solution as well.
Great. Councilmember Babcock?
Hey, thank you. I am the council liaison to the Transportation Commission, Commission on Transportation. This is just, you know, I've been talking all day, and now I'm just making sounds. At any rate, that commission does great work. It's got great people on it, and just wanted to have this discussion more fully aired. I know Mr. House is up to it and could explain it to all of us and sort of put some concerns to rest, so I thank you.
Great. Plus, it gives him a little bit of time to spend with us before he heads off for a bit. Any other questions?
Just a comment. Yeah, comments. There's no sidewalk on on that street. Sorry, my brain's going, going away. But there's no sidewalk. I've seen people during, when it snowed, walking in the street.
You're correct. So you look at their, Abbott borders a portion of Meridian Township, and you see how close the telephone poles are right against the curb line. There's literally no right of way for a sidewalk there. And that's one of those tough ones where you have the border roads where your trunk, your meter road is bordered by someone else. So we have a sidewalk on the west side, which is the East Lansing side, but as you get up towards the Lake Lansing, that's where you see that really tight area that's really uncomfortable. The, and even getting out of those drives is tough.
All right. Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of it. I think it's a great idea, and I also just hope the merge happens weird on Hagadorn when it was made into bike lanes, and this is, I think, once you pass Saginaw and you're headed towards Donnelly, but the merge is just kind of weird. So just hopefully, when this happens, the merge won't be as weird where sometimes the cars don't know, they don't realize they need to slow down like they should. Then I think it sounds great.
Great. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on this item. Go ahead, Councilmember Babcock.
I move we authorize the contract for the major street improvements. You know what? Okay, this is just, let's just scratch tonight, but I've got pulled up says Trowbridge and Harrison, which is not at all what we want. Let's. Ron, you out there?
No, I'm done.
I will, I will make a motion to approve a resolution to execute the cost-sharing agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT for Utility Improvements Resurfacing, and the addition of bike lanes on Abbott Road between Saginaw Street and Lake Lansing Road. Is there a second for that?
Second. I will happily second.
Great. I will say seconded by Councilmember Bacon. Any more discussion? Thanks for this. Thanks for the work on it, and hopefully we'll see some water of this in the future. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right. Seeing none, that passes unanimously. We are now on to a, our closed session, which we passed by roll call vote earlier this council meeting. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna head into a, another Zoom meeting. Council members, it should be in your inbox, that link and invitation, and then we will be coming back to this meeting to adjourn our closed session, as well to adjourn the regular meeting. So for folks that are watching here with us, we will be back to this live stream broadcast, but it really will be to just adjourn the closed session and to adjourn the meeting overall. Go ahead, Councilmember Babcock.
And to follow up on a certain previous caller, and for the general public, can we say which collective bargaining agreements we will be discussing in closed session?
Yes, we have the public safety groups, so police, two police groups and a fire group.
Thank you.
Great. All right. We will be back.
Great. I will make a motion to end the closed session and look for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bacon with a clerk please call.
Councilmember Babcock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bacon?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Greg?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes. All right, without our close session is ended and that was our last item on the agenda. Thanks for sticking with us everybody. We will see you next week. This council meeting is adjourned.